We'll call to order the Lompoc City Council meeting, March 4th, 2025. Clerk would do roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present.
Please join me in invocation by Pastor Nate Marsh.
Join me in prayer. God, we seek your mercies again tonight. You are a detail-oriented God, and your creation is complex but ordered. It's diverse but cyclical and robust. We need your wisdom to seek the prosperity of all. We are a diverse community with many interests, and it's difficult to balance those interests, especially when not all are what's best for others. We ask for your foresight to see obstacles and pitfalls before they happen. Give this council understanding beyond their own abilities. Make them bold servants of this community. Give them strength to do the absolute best for Lompoc. Protect them from temptations. Watch over their families. Make them honorable in the sight of their colleagues and staff. Direct their steps. Help them to see things that will prosper Lompoc in new and exciting ways, and don't let their hands be tied to special interests. Give their staff wisdom on how to advise and assist in caring for our town. God, we ask that you would give peace to our community, that you would protect our protectors, our police officers, emergency and medical personnel. Guard their lives and their skills as they guard us. Strike down those who would take advantage of others and ridicule those that scoff at rules and the order of our society. Bind up those who only seek their own benefits. Change hearts that need to be changed. Give a greater vision for those that have a narrow focus. Take us step by step closer to your righteousness and glory and make our community an incredible place for all to live, work, and celebrate your blessings and your world. Bless this meeting now. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to my tribe, of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for City manager's report.
This spring, the Lompoc Public Library is collaborating with the Neighborhood Forest for the 16th Annual Free Tree Program, which aims to foster youth's environmental awareness and enhance our community's green space. Parents and guardians can register their kids online, March 15th, to receive a free tree during Earth Day, April 22nd through the 27th. Trees will be available to pick up on Earth Day. For more information, you can go to www.neighborhoodforest.org or call library at 875-8775. Code enforcement staff have been working closely with food vendor trucks, carts, flower vendors, and other mobile sellers in town to ensure that they are necessary permits and license to operate legally with proactive focus on education and compliance to support a safe environmental environment. Unlicensed food vendors pose health risk to our residents due to unsanitary conditions and lack of proper food safety measures. We encourage Lompoc residents to support licensed vendors and report any violations through the Citizens Concern Form on the city's webpage. Until further notice, used motor oil will no longer be accepted at the landfill. Residents are encouraged to use oil-certified collecting centers such as O'Reilly's or Autozone. You can also drop them off at the Hazard Waste Facility by calling 875-8017. They're having a meeting for Caltrans District 5 to hold a public meeting next Wednesday, the 12th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Cabrillo High School. Caltrans engineers will be presenting information on proposed modifications aimed to enhance the safety on Highway 1 and Lucia Canyon Road. Encourage you guys to come on out. It's an important measure there. I just want to remind everybody, March 18th, we'll have a special meeting here on housing elements, and it'll be before 4 o'clock, before our regular scheduled meeting on the 18th. Lastly, I wanted to thank the Parks and Babe Ruth Group for working on the Johnny Lizaraga Ball Field, preparing it for the Lompoc Babe Ruth Opening Ceremony this upcoming week. Upgrades included new grass, refreshed clay, surfacing, fencing, repainting the dugout and repairing flag holes, and all it was done in-house by our park staff and the Babe Ruth members. So I wanted to thank those guys for doing a great job. That's all I have.
Any quick questions for the city manager? Good enough cheap tonight. Thank you. So open up public comment on consent calendar. That's things on the docket here. We're getting close for you guys, but not yet. Any public comment on consent calendar? City Attorney, are we pulling one or two items off of there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before we get to public comment on these consent calendar items, 1 through 5, I have a couple announcements. Item number 3 is a Pioneer Park Babe Ruth Baseball Field Project. Staff is requesting that that item just be pulled from the agenda tonight. We're going to bring it back at the next meeting to correct a few items on that. And item number 5 is a Lompoc Theater Project request. Councilmember Starbuck has a real property interest in that item, so he's going to recuse himself from the vote, but because it is on the consent calendar, he does not need to leave the room. And his real property interest is not with the theater. It's within 500 feet of the theater.
So real fast, I'll just read what is on the consent calendar. We have approval of minutes, approval of the County Santa Barbara Subrecipient Agreement 2024, tablet command platform of Lompoc City Fire Department. So you're getting a $13,000 grant, right? And the Babe Ruth has been pulled off. Number 4 is Lompoc Library Youth Restroom ADA Upgrade. That's awarded a contract of $261,000. And number 5, which is the Lompoc Theater Project Request for Resolutional Support Letter of Endorsement to California State Historic Preservation Office and State Historic Resource Commission for nomination of the Lompoc Theater, Lompoc Land Office Building, and the National Register of Historic Places. So with that, public comment, go ahead.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here. My name is Mark Harrier. I'm the Executive Director of the Lompoc Theater Project, and we have been working for 12 long years to get to where we are now. We will be breaking ground in all of our seismic and roof replacement in April, God willing. We submitted plans over the last few months, had some nice meetings and presentations, and we're very excited as to where we are. I'm asking you to support item number 5 on the agenda to get us that historic designation because, quite frankly, two reasons. One is the buildings deserve it. The theater itself, built in 1927, we are on track to perhaps reopen it in time for its 100th birthday, May 21st, 2027. And the land office, which is attached to it, is not only the oldest wooden commercial building in Lompoc, but it is also the oldest wooden commercial building in Santa Barbara County. So it's one of the few of its kind that used to be ubiquitous throughout the state, but we're going to save this one and move it back to H Street where it started. But the most important reason for this designation is it means money towards building and restoring the theater. We will be eligible with this designation for historic tax credits. State and federal historic tax credits will give over $4 million to us with no strings attached so that we can bring this community treasure back to life. Nothing is more important to the economic, social heart of this city than restoring this treasure, and I urge your support tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else, public comment? All right, that will close public comment. Bring it back to the council for motions.
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Motion to accept consent calendar with the adjustment, taking away item 3, I believe. 3 and 5.
Well, no, 5 still there, but he's off of 5, yes. Correct. We'll get a separate vote on 5? Did we need you to separate vote? No, we didn't. Okay. So, okay, we have a second by Councilmember Bridge. So with that, go ahead and vote, understanding that Councilmember Starbuck is not voting for 5. And that passes 5-0. You got your wish. There you go. So now we have a staff presentation. Who's doing the presentation on possible uses for opioid settlement funds? Is that the police chief?
Good evening, council, community. So as many of you are aware, we receive funding from the opioid settlements, and it's a significant amount of money, but it has a very, very strict parameter set on it on how we can spend that money. So what we did is we reached out to a consultant to help us put a video together to address the problem in our community and to help educate people and give them some information as where to go to get some help should they need it. So what I'm going to do is this is, we believe, very close to the final draft of the video, and I'm going to ask Chrissy Donnelly to play it for us, and then if you have any questions about numbers and things like that, we can answer that after, so. We need sound. This has been the most significant drug to impact any community. It's not unique to Lompoc. It's countywide, it's statewide, it's national.
But that doesn't mean the Lompoc community feels it any less.
Over the last three years, we've seen an increase to about 160 calls a year that are fentanyl-related exclusively.
You don't have to look far to find people who have seen the dangers of fentanyl firsthand.
I've used drugs in the past to cope with family deaths, all that stuff, trauma, whatever it is that you use. That's why I use it to cope with, I used heroin or fentanyl or any kind of opiate, any kind of downer to feel better.
The drug's impact doesn't discriminate between age or even income.
Spectrum varies from, you know, say, lower income to middle income to higher income to homeless population.
We're seeing such an increase in young adults and teenagers that are engaging in the use of fentanyl that we want to make sure we can do everything we can to help them.
First responders say each time someone ingests the drug, they run the risk of overdosing or even death. In fact, just the small amount next to the penny shown here is a fatal dose, but what makes it so deadly?
The sources that they're getting it from are not legitimate laboratories. It's coming across the border in pill form and not measured out the way that a laboratory would do it. So when they think they're getting a small amount of this drug, they're getting way more than the body can handle, and then the body shuts down.
When first responders encounter narcotics, there's precautions they put in place to avoid their exposure to this dangerous drug that can unintentionally seep into their skin or airways. While the PPE is helpful, one thing first responders can't protect themselves from is the lasting mental toll that can sometimes linger for months or even years after intercepting an overdose.
That's where it happened.
Captain Augustine Arias is a 25-year veteran of the Lompoc Police Department and recalls the day he discovered a child had ingested fentanyl like it was yesterday.
When you see a child that's dying or dead, it sticks with you. It's not an image that you can erase. It's not an image that you'll ever get out of your mind. It's going to sit there.
Captain Arias says he entered the child's home to see if any other children needed help. That's when he noticed a white powder substance in the bathroom.
After communicating with the parents and finding out what possibly the child could have ingested, I found that it was fentanyl.
Arias says he quickly stepped into action, notifying the crews treating the child in the street down below.
And they administered Narcan to the child, at which time she became responsive to treatment. And by the time they got to the hospital, they were able to stabilize the child and pretty much save her life.
Hope for curbing some of the addictions around fentanyl is now coming in the form of enhancements to treatment options and enforcement for those caught with the drug under the new Proposition 36.
With this new law, these people are going to end up at some point in front of a judge, and a judge is going to make a decision what's best, whether you can go back into the community or if you're going to stay in custody, and as a part of that, hopefully, order rehabilitation so that they go into some kind of drug rehab program to help them get off of that drug because right now, there is no accountability for that.
Lompoc's first responders are also working on educational campaigns to increase awareness about the dangers of using this drug and look forward to participating in new opportunities for helping those in need.
We want people to know that just because you are using these drugs, there is certainly a way out, and we're certainly happy to help get those people through that and onto the next phase.
To find resources for those experiencing addiction, visit the Lompoc Police Department app. Scan the QR code on your screen to be taken to your phone's app store. Open the app and navigate to the Links tab to learn more.
So what we're trying to do is educate. We're trying to draw attention to this and still offer options for people to find help should they need that for their addiction problems. This was the first go at this. We plan on doing some more. We plan on doing some flyers out into the community and into the schools to help educate and draw attention to it and give people those options. So I asked Chrissy Donnelly to be available should you guys have any questions about the numbers and where we're at and how much we spent today. So any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Do you want to share us numbers?
I can do that. So our total award was just over $1 million from multiple settlements. That's over the course of about 14 years that we are going to be receiving that. As of right now, we have received about $145,000. I apologize, that was the 2024 amount, and we've received an additional $16,000 in 2025. Our total available after doing all of this is still $141,000. And so there is funding to do additional outreach, but the parameters for what we can use that money for is very limited. If you have any other questions about the finances, I could, you know, talk about it all night.
So moving forward, what we plan to do is this will be available through our social media options at the police department. We're also going to be reaching out to the local television networks to come up with a way to present it. It's a little long for just a quick few minutes on the TV, but we will be able to cut it and make it work as needed just to get that attention out there.
Yeah, remember, I don't think you were on the call, but the sheriff was on the Zoom two weeks ago. There was five people in the county died on opiates, so it's a scary thing that's out there, so.
All right, thank you.
Question?
Just a quick question. You know, obviously, it's not a ton of money, but it's a decent chunk of money, and it's over time, and I can imagine some people, over time, remembering that the city got some money. What should we? I'm understanding that we're limited. Outreach seems like it's about all we can do. Is there anything else that we can do with those funds that will allow us to measure whether or not success is possible? My fear is that, of course, we, you know, we do a lot of good outreach and effort, and we spend this money, but do we see, you know, numbers change at all? Should we expect that? Maybe temper our expectations a little bit with this.
Well, I think, yeah, the first step is education and just getting the word out there and letting people know there are options in the community if they're having a family member or loved one that's struggling. You can just go to the Links page on the app, and it'll take you to the DEA's website that lists all the different ways to get help for this addiction problem. We're going to look at some other options. I mean, there is the ability to hire somebody to do full-time education and things like that. We're potentially going to look at that, but that'll start eating that funding up really quick. So, you know, we're just going to try and figure out what's best for this community. And what I didn't want to do is send the money out to the county level and us not be able to use it for our community. And so that was really the driving force for what I wanted to do, was keep it here so we can use it here locally, and we'll look. And we're definitely going to come up with some more options.
I know there appears to be a lot of Narcan on the street, but this new stuff that's out there right now, Narcan doesn't work on the trank and...
Sorry to interrupt. It does. There's newer versions of the Narcan that they've increased the ability to address those problems. Some of the older versions, for anybody in the community that has like the first release of Narcan, you may want to take a look at that. We're finding that, I mean, the fire chief could probably talk to it better than I could, but they're having to use multiple doses of Narcan to get people to come back out. So, but the Narcan has been a lifesaver, and hopefully, it'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Guess what's next? Oral Communications. Allows you three minutes.
Nick Niklenko, resident Lompoc. Weeks ago, I came across somebody. He was laying in a bush, sprawled out. He had a bicycle right in front of him. I didn't know what to think. I didn't know if this guy was alive. I didn't know what the situation was. So I called dispatch, and they sent two officers. While they were en route, a car drives up. Hey, man, you okay? And the guy just sits right up. But I tried to keep him there until officers got there so they could assess him. And then I remembered, hey, I carry Narcan in my vehicle in case I come across somebody in an emergency situation. So I grabbed it. I've never used it on anybody. So I'm like, okay, when the officers get here, if they don't have it on them, I've got it, and if they need it, maybe it could save a life. This community, people are dying in our streets. Children are dying. Teenagers are dying, and some of them may not be purposely taking fentanyl. Some of them may not be purposely overdosing. And they might think, oh, I'm just smoking a joint. They don't know that that joint might be laced with fentanyl. They don't know what's in what they're taking. Narcan needs to be more accessible to people in this community because it could save a life. It could save a life of a loved one. It could save a life of a stranger. It does not matter. But I believe that Narcan needs to be more accessible in this community. There need to be distribution events. Target the people in the riverbed. Target the homeless. Target anybody. Hey, you never know what you're going to come across in this community, and if somebody's trained in how to administer it, they could save a life. So, thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Alexia Miranda. I was born and raised in Lompoc, California. I am one of the leaders of Voces Sin Frontera, and I am here in full support of the proposal that Voces Sin Frontera has submitted. I have physical copies here for the council. Immigrants are essential to our community, contributing to our economy, culture, and town small businesses. Not supporting or not welcoming immigrants will weaken our entire community. I ask the council to please pass a resolution recognizing undocumented immigrants as vital members of the community, ensure compliance with state laws that protect and support immigrant rights, provide resources, education, and raise awareness. I urge you to add this issue to the March 18th agenda and take action.
Hello, my name is Andrea Palacio, and I am here as a leader and supporter of the proposal sent to you by Voces Sin Fronteras. As a Lompoc native and first-generation child, we are asking city council, who holds the power, to pass a resolution in solidarity with our immigrant neighbors, parents, and children. My immigrant parents have taught me in order to succeed in this country, you must fight and work hard. That is the reason I am standing before you today. I am here fighting, working hard, and using my voice to make changes for those that have no choice but to be silent. No one and no family should live in fear. We must support our immigrants and undocumented members of the community because not only are they essential to our diversity, but our labor force, and most importantly, our families. The separation of families causes outstanding trauma to the mental and emotional health of all those involved. I cannot imagine the immense fear of going to work, school, or even the grocery store and wondering if I'll make it home. I cannot imagine the unbearable pain of being ripped away from my family, my parents, siblings, or even my children. For this reason, we ask that you help by writing letters of support to our state legislators in support of bills like SB 54 and SB 48 to reinforce our undocumented community. We also ask that city council help by spreading information from reliable and trusted resources to our undocumented community, who may not even know that these resources exist, as well as sponsoring a screening of the documentary Separated, which stresses the traumatic and treacherous effects of separating families. I urge you to put this matter on the agenda for the March 18th meeting, as it is a pressing concern for many in the community. I hope to work together in the near future, as this may be the first, but not the last time that you will hear from us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members, I'm Mayor Mosby. My name is Alex Murkison, and I'm a proud member of Voces Sin Fronteras, a black man and a committed leader in this community. I stand before you today not just as an ally, but as someone who understands the weight of history and our responsibility to stand up when injustice knocked on our neighbor's door. When they came for my people, we were criminalized, demonized, enslaved, and told we didn't deserve the opportunities this country promised, and we fought and we won, and now our undocumented neighbors are under attack. But let's be clear, this struggle isn't new for them, it has always existed, it's just more visible now, more volatile, more dangerous, because of the current political climate. Once again, we are being asked to fight for what should have already been a given, dignity, security, and on the base level, humanity. These are our friends, our coworkers, our classmates, and our neighbors. When they suffer, we all suffer. When their children live in fear, our schools feel it. When their labor is threatened, our economy takes a hit. When they disappear from our streets, the soul of Lompoc dims a bit. Lompoc is strong because it is diverse. Our undocumented neighbors are the backbone of our agricultural economy, they are the parents of the children in our schools, they are small business owners, workers, taxpayers, and community members, and yet, fear and misinformation and discrimination are threatening to tear them away. This is not just an immigration issue, this is a community issue. That's why I'm here in full support of the proposal. This council has the power and the responsibility to take a stand. We are asking for a resolution affirming that undocumented residents are an essential part of our community. We are asking you to commit to upholding laws that protect them. We are asking you to use the city resources to ensure they have the information and support they need to live without fear. With a single vote, you five council members have the ability to lift the fear hanging over Lompoc's Hispanic and Latino community, which makes up sixty-one percent of our city. This isn't a radical request, it's the bare minimum. The question is not whether we stand on the right side of history, the question is do each of you? Thank you.
My name is Larissa Hilario. I am here this evening in support of the proposal sent to you by Voces Sin Fronteras, which requests that you take action to support our undocumented neighbors and residents during these uncertain times. As someone who was born and raised here in Lompoc, we ask that you stand with the immigrant population and make your position on these issues very clear. I am proud and fortunate enough to come from a long line of immigrants from the states of Michoacan, Zacatecas, and Jalisco. Family members have been lucky enough to come through programs like the Brazero Program and the Amnesty Program. Since then, my family members have become business owners, served in the military, teachers, firefighters, police officers, and yes, worked many years in the agricultural industry. Their contributions to this community have been inspiring, I am very proud of their hard work, determination, and their success. Our people are hard-working, tax-paying pillars in the community, and greatly contribute to the economy in this country, but more specifically, to Lompoc. Sixty-one point eight percent of Lompokians are of Hispanic or Latino descent. That's sixty-one point eight percent of your community, living in fear, living in fear for themselves or for their loved ones. Fear of being looked at first due to the color of their skin, second, as an immigrant, third, as an unlawful immigrant, and the list goes on and on. We ask that the city council support our immigrant and undocumented neighbors by passing a resolution stating undocumented immigrants are essential to the fabric of our community, and by making your positions clear, by stating your support of the California Values Act, which prevents state and local law enforcement from using resources for federal immigration enforcement. It also protects the safety of Californians by ensuring that schools, health facilities, and courthouses remain accessible to everyone. Again, I'm here in support to stand up for, to fight for, to defend, and help those who live in constant fear. Are you? If you are, consider putting this matter on the agenda for deliberation at the March eighteenth council meeting. Thank you.
My name is Janet Blevins. I'm a forty-year resident of Lompoc. I am privileged, I am white. All of our immigrants, whether they are documented or undocumented, do not share that privilege. They are under attack. I left, just left a school board meeting when I was still on the board, my term expired last December, when I was still on the board. We passed a resolution to protect all of our students and families from ICE. Our schools are private, our families are private, all of their information is private. I don't care what this current national administration says, that's what we say, and we have that power. And our sheriff has said he supports that. He supports not turning people in because of their immigrant status. I have not heard the same from our police department, and I would very much like to know the position of our police department. I hope that they do not support turning people into ICE because of their immigration status. These people grow our food, pick our food, and they're the reason that we have these wonderful fruits and vegetables on our table. They do work that white people think they're too good to do. They don't want to break their backs in this kind of labor, and they don't have to, because, again, we have white privilege. Please consider the importance of immigrants, documented or un, to our economy in this city and in this state, and to the foodstuffs that we have the privilege of eating. Thank you.
I'm gonna follow Ms. Blevins. Karen Howenstein, I was born here in Lompoc. As I understand it, and also from the national scene, for the same reason why we remember Marlon Brumfield, who was a personal friend of mine. Marlon Brumfield was killed, murdered in cold blood, by a man who was wanted for murder in Mexico, who had been contacted numerous times by law enforcement here in Lompoc, and law enforcement wanted to deport him and send him away, but we were sanctuary state. And so, he killed Marlon in cold blood and took him away from our community, and he was a very special man, and he was going to be a veterinarian, going to go to college on the ROTC. So, we need to remember what the focus is for law enforcement, and that is our safety, and the only people law enforcement, including ICE, is interested in are criminals who are actually doing criminal activity. Criminal activity that would include capital crimes and crimes against women and children, things like that. I don't believe that the law enforcement community in California is wanting to scrub schools, or churches, or any other place, for people who are following the law, because we need law and order in our state. We need to get these drugs out, and the people who are wanted for murder and capital crimes in other countries need to go back? And that's what's happening. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, community of Lompoc. My name is Yamara Mejia. I was not raised here, nor am I a member of this community, but I am here as a neighbor from the city of Solvay. And I'm also here as a friend to the people of your community. I must ask of you to listen to their voices tonight, and mine, and to consider their proposal. We ask of you to support our undocumented family and friends, and to leave no room for the injustice that poisons the communities. Please support our immigrants, they are the backbone of our country that we did not Council, you have been given the option to help change our communities and our nation for the better, but whether you choose to help destroy, it is a decision for you to make. Please let us work together for the better. Thank you for your time.
My name is Alexis Otero. I'm a Lompoc native, and I've lived all across the country, but no matter how many times I've moved, I always come back to Lompoc. This is, and always will be, my home. Today, I'm here to support Voces Sin Fronteras' initiative to make Lompoc an inclusive city. I could spend my time at this podium to talk about statistics. Inclusive cities experience thirty-five point five percent fewer crimes per ten thousand people than non-inclusive cities. Poverty rates are lower by two point three percent, employment is lower by one point one percent, median household income is four thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars higher in inclusive cities than it is in un-inclusive cities. But instead, I would like to take my time to address not just the council, but those on the fence about this initiative. Migrants, regardless of their immigration status, are human beings. Migrants are not boogeymen here to steal your pets, or kill your kids, or rape your partners. These are our neighbors. Migrants are members of our church congregations, our drinking buddies, our parents, friends, lovers, family by blood, family by choice. Just like those of us who were born here, they want what's best for their loved ones and the community that they've traveled so far to be an active member of. To my neighbors, I ask that you stand and protect your fellow citizens in these uncertain times. We are and always will be stronger together. And to the council, I implore you to look on our most vulnerable, sorry, I implore you to look on our most vulnerable communities with mercy and compassion. Right now, history is being made, and I hope that your names will go down in the books as the people who brought Lompoc forward into the future. I ask that this initiative be placed on the March eighteenth meeting. In this moment, I hope that you rise to the occasion as allies committed to the safety and security of every member of our community. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Longa Razon. I'm here to support the proposal sent to you by Voces Sin Fronteras to support our undocumented residents. I'm a first-generation daughter to amazing, brave, and selfless immigrant parents. I'm here for them, for my friends, neighbors, and anyone who simply doesn't have a voice out of fear. I'm here, I'm firsthand have felt the fear of what ICE raids and the uncertainty of what tomorrow is. Becoming friends with the security guard at the immigration court, sorry, practicing my speech on why I think my parents deserved to be here as a child, having to tell my teachers and classmates I was out sick instead of being able to tell them that I was in court, fighting to convince a judge that my parents are good people, and explaining why separating our family would destroy me, all out of fear that someone might call ICE on us. These are memories I wish I never had in my childhood or as a child. This is why I feel so strongly about the protection of immigrant family safety and how essential they are to a community. I hope that you take our proposal serious, and I hope to be here on March eighteenth with good news. Thank you.
My name is Sabrina Ross, and I am here supporting the proposal sent to you by Voces Sin Fronteras. I have worked with victims of violent crime in Lompoc for the past thirteen years. You all know the work I do, some of you more than others. As a victim advocate and a counselor, many of my clients over the years have been immigrants or children of immigrants. A speaker earlier commented about violent crime, but if she wants to know the rate of white men who commit horrible acts of violence against women and children, she can come speak to me, because I don't know just one victim of a violent crime, I know thousands from right here in Lompoc. And blaming one community who statistically commit the least amount of crime of any demographic is ignorant and dangerous. In the last few months, I have been hearing the fear and uncertainty from clients as young as twelve, who don't want to go to school and leave their parents alone for fear their parents will be taken and deported. They are afraid for their parents to go anywhere without them, not to work, not to the store, not even to drive them to school, because they feel a deep loyalty to keep their family safe, which is something I think everybody in this room can relate to. But these are children who should be focused on healing from abuse and trauma, being good students and enjoying time with their peers, not focused on protecting their parents from the government. I do my best to ease their fear and distress, but when parents are being detained by ICE on their way to their kids' soccer games in our neighboring communities, when their classmates are jeering at them and calling them names, threatening to call ICE because that's what those kids have learned from the adults in their lives, it's impossible to give my young clients the reassurance and sense of safety they really need. I am a fourth-generation resident of Lompoc. I was raised here by my grandparents and parents and other adults in this community to believe in people's humanity first, to treat others the way I want to be treated, and that family and community are the most important values we have in common, all families, not just mine. You have an opportunity before you now to let our immigrant community, these families that exist peacefully beside mine and yours, to know that they are valued and safe here, not just for the work they do, but because they are human beings, and deserve as much as you or me to exist safely and feel supported by our city leaders. I hope you will consider putting this matter on the agenda for deliberation at the March eighteenth council meeting, and that some or all of the requested actions will be recommended for council vote in the near future.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, I've let you guys celebrate, you guys are getting a little bit too much, just calm down just a little bit on that, so the speakers can get through. Normally, we don't let applause happen here, I know you guys are very passionate in what you're doing, and so, just a little bit and let the people get through the conversation or their wants, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michaela Cregness. I did not know about this resolution that was being proposed until walking in today. I was very pleased to see the room so full of community members. I too am a community member here since about two thousand and one, and I do want to not center myself or non-white people in this conversation, but also bring to the forefront that this is not necessarily unusual for our country. There have been lots of years in the past where Irish people, non-Hispanic Latinos, Italians, Black community members have also been the focus of a lot of IR, and I think as time has gone on, we've always seen that we regret what we put those people through when we don't deal with the root of our problems and decide to blame other people who are part of our community for the issues that are usually systemic and usually come from governmental bodies not doing the work that they should be doing to support the people who need support in our communities of all colors. Furthermore, I would like to point out that, in addition, when we start to focus on blaming anybody in any race for any problem and focusing in on trying to use force to excise those community members, every body's quality of life does deplete. The amount of... I know myself, being biracial, am not always clocked properly, and people don't necessarily know who I am or where I come from, or... And that can even put people who are light-skinned Black or other races in the line of fire. And again, it's not about centering people who are not currently the focus of this IR, but it is acknowledgement that we will all suffer in more ways than just economic. We will lose our friends, we'll lose our neighbors that we love and care about, we'll lose not only people who pick our food, but we'll lose people who own businesses and have contributed to our lives and the community around us in more ways than we can name. And I think that that is also worth considering. Sorry, I wasn't as eloquent as the people who came before me. Thank you.
My name is Christina Valdez. I'm here this evening in support of the proposal sent to you by Vozes Sin Fronteras, which requests you to take actions to support our undocumented residents during these uncertain and unsettling times. As members of the Lompoc community, we ask that you stand with the immigrant population and make your position on these issues clear. While many great and important points are being made by everyone tonight, I have decided to speak just briefly on something that my particular training is extensive in. As a mental health professional in this community, I often speak about the impacts of stress. Stress is intended to be a temporary reaction to a very temporary event. When stressed, our bodies release high amounts of cortisol. When we release too much for days and weeks and months, instead of a few seconds, it begins to weaken our immune system, which we all know leads to greater likelihoods of infections and diseases. Prolonged stress also leads to more inflammation, which is linked to numerous chronic diseases. This is aside from the emotional and mental anguish. I think it's safe to assume that most of our undocumented friends and their families are living their lives like this right now, and to turn our backs on them would be a great injustice and moral failure on our part. Thus, our community must stand by our immigrant and undocumented neighbors. We ask that the city council support our immigrant and undocumented neighbors by passing a resolution stating that undocumented immigrants are essential to the fabric of our community. The city will comply with all state laws such as SB 54, which protect undocumented rights, writing letters of support to our state legislators, supporting bills like SB 48, AB 421, and others that codify the rights of undocumented neighbors, distribute information about available resources for undocumented immigrants using city resources. I hope you will consider putting this matter on the agenda for deliberation at the March 18th council meeting, and that some actions will be recommended for council vote in the near future. Thank you.
Good evening, council and my awesome community of Lompoc. My name is Carla Placencia, and I am here in full support of Vozes Sin Fronteras' proposition for Lompoc to take a firm stand on everything that is happening right now. We must reject divisive and fear-mongering tactics being used against our immigrant community. Let's not forget what happens when those in power try to convince us that one particular group is to blame for the country's misfortune. We have very real problems, but these problems cannot be pinned on one group. This is a tactic to divide us. Let's not forget what happens when we criminalize this group and round them up to put them Let's not suppress our basic biological imperative, which is to connect to our fellow humans, despite our differences, despite the fear. Remember that that's our ancient human inheritance. We evolved. We evolved as humans to be in community and to connect with each other, to need one another. We must protect our vulnerable communities. We must challenge fear, hatred, and racism, or it will be the destruction of us all. Thank you.
Good evening, city council and mayor. My name is Susie Riley, and I'm joining the voices here tonight to request that the Lompoc community take decisive and clear steps to support our immigrant neighbors as outlined in the proposal sent to you by Vozes Sin Fronteras. Starting with the why, immigrants are integral to this Lompoc community experience. For the past 25 years, personally, I've been a public school teacher here in Lompoc and an administrator, so I've worked closely with families. And these students and families were then and still are deeply involved in our community as a school community and the broader Lompoc community. What I experienced as a teacher specifically were students who were academically motivated, and they brought a great many assets. I saw families who were working hard to provide for their families and involved in the school community and in many other ways around town, always welcoming. Recently, I ran into a former 4th grade student from one of my past 4th grade classes at La Honda Elementary. I remember that he was a really hard worker. He had a great sense of humor, and he had a great family who instilled good values. I saw him the other day while I was walking at the mission, and he gave me an update on what he's doing now. He explained to me that he studied and worked hard, and he earned his contractor's license. And now he has his own business, and he leads a team in the construction business right here in Lompoc. And he was so proud of himself, and I was proud of him because I understood how far he had come and the obstacles he had to overcome to get to make his dream a reality. I thought to myself, what a shining example of the promise of immigrants in our Lompoc community. I could tell you hundreds of other positive stories with my experience teaching, and it would describe to you how important immigrants are to making Lompoc such a wonderful place to live. And now that you've heard the stories about why I believe immigrants are key to the Lompoc way, I'm asking you to please consider adding the points from the proposal to the upcoming agenda for March 18th so that we can value, support, and protect documented and undocumented immigrants as part of our Lompoc community. Thank you.
My name is Sheri Wells, and I am here tonight in support of Vozes Sin Fronteras, a group of community members who believe in the strength of our city and the dignity of every person who calls Lompoc home. Because of the presence of federal immigration agents in our city, children are missing school, employees are missing work, and families are living in fear. When students struggle to focus in school and when employees cannot safely contribute to our economy, the entire community suffers. Undocumented workers make up more than half of the agricultural workforce in Santa Barbara County. If we allow fear to drive these individuals away, we risk not only a humanitarian crisis, but an economic one as well. Enrollment in our schools will decline, reducing the already limited state funding our district receives. We believe that Lompoc can and must take action to address these concerns. I urge you to review every part of the proposal presented to you tonight and take this matter up at the discussion at the March 18th meeting. We ask you to stand with the workers who fuel our economy, with the children who sit in our classrooms, and with the families who call Lompoc home. This is not just about policy, this is about who we are as a city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. My name is Bingar Adonis. I was born here in Lompoc in 1963. I'm a proud graduate of the Lompoc High School class of 1980, and I'm also the son of Filipino immigrants. My father's generation of Filipino migrants who arrived in large numbers on the West Coast from 1924 to 1934 comprised a major portion of the manual labor force of farms up and down the coast from the Canadian to the Mexican border, including right here in Lompoc. As a young child here in Lompoc in the 1960s and 1970s, I grew up in the company of many elderly Filipino men who had toiled in Lompoc's flower fields from the '20s to the '60s. These men helped give Lompoc its longtime reputation as being the flower capital of the world. Agriculture is an indispensable part of what has made California the fifth-biggest economy in the world, and immigrant labor today, whether documented or undocumented, is an indispensable part of that industry. Like the old Filipino men of my childhood in Lompoc who were called my uncles, today's immigrants, essential laborers in Lompoc, not only in agriculture, but also in other fields like construction and hospitality, deserve to be recognized both for their contributions to our society and for their full humanity. It's not these essential workers' fault that our federal government over the past 30 years has consistently failed to develop comprehensive immigration policy that would have provided a pathway to citizenship for people who sought a better life here, just like the Mayflower pilgrims of 1620. Most Americans don't know that the vast majority of undocumented residents in the U.S. arrived here by plane and overstayed their visas, not by secretly crossing the southern border, a first-time offense of which, by the way, is a mere misdemeanor and it is not a felony. I appeal to the councils and the mayor's senses of reason and humanity to see that the separation of families whose members are mere misdemeanors and not violent felons contradicts American ideals enshrined in the Statue of Liberty, one of our country's most famous symbols. And so, I respectfully request that this council and mayor support the proposal set forth last month by Vozes Sin Fronteras by placing their proposal in the council's agenda for March 18th. Thank you.
My name is Serene Partridge. I have lived in Lompoc for 15 years, and this is my 12th year teaching in the Lompoc Unified School District. I'm here tonight in support of the proposal by Vozes Sin Fronteras. Please take these necessary actions in support of our immigrant residents. California is one of the most diverse states and has the fifth-largest economy in the world, is driven by immigrants. This clearly shows the value of immigrants in our great state and in our community. In addition, these proposals are good for our city in many other important ways. As stated in the proposal, inclusive communities have fewer crimes, higher median household annual incomes, lower poverty rates, less unemployment than counties that are not inclusive. Let's show that we will not be bullied by federal agents. California law states that the federal government cannot use taxpayer money to make us help them do their job. We need to support our local police department so they feel comfortable saying no to federal agents when asked for help in the process of mass deportations. Our community needs to be able to trust local law enforcement when they need help or want to report a crime. We are discussing the futures of our neighbors, friends, and families. We want our community to be strong together. Please show one of the most hard-working, mistreated, underpaid, and vulnerable parts of our community that we stand with them. We expect good, strong leadership from you, our city council, to protect our immigrants, documented and undocumented, by considering this proposal to be added to the agenda for deliberation and subsequently voted upon. Thank you for your time and for serving every person in our community.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Yasmin Dawson, a resident here and have been here for 30 years. I'm also the executive director for C4 Collective Cultures, Creations, Change. I stand before you not just as a leader of my organization dedicated to a justice, but as a person who had lived through the pain of prejudice and the fear of being seen as other. As someone of mixed descent, I know what it feels like to be treated as if you don't belong. I've experienced the sting of discrimination, and I've witnessed how systems, when left unchecked, can strip people of their dignity. Today, I want to speak from a humanitarian perspective about the impact of deportations and ICE enforcement. Behind every case is a person, someone's mother, father, child, who contributes to our communities, who works hard, who dreams like the rest of us. When we talk about immigration policies, we cannot afford to lose sight of the humanity at stake. We believe in justice, but justice must be balanced with compassion. Our organization advocates for free treatment within the boundaries of the law, ensuring that due process and human rights are respected. We're not asking for lawlessness, we're asking for laws to reflect our shared values of fairness and dignity. This is not just a legal issue, it's a moral one. We must recognize the long-term harm caused by tearing families apart and the fear that lingers in communities when enforcement lacks accountability and compassion. I urge us all, leaders, policymakers, and community members, to look beyond politics and see the people affected. Let's push for solutions that honor both the law and our humanity, because how we treat the most vulnerable among us defines who we are as a society. And I pray that you just not listen to us, that you take heed for what's being said today, because it's important to all of us. All of us have been affected in one way or another. So please, take heed to what they're proposing today, and I hope by the time we come back that we can hear some significant changes in our community. Thank you.
My name is Roberta Taylor. I've been a resident on the Central Coast for 47 years, 32 of them right here in Lompoc, a lovely community which I love. I'm here tonight in support of the proposal submitted to you by Vozes Sin Fronteras to take specific actions to protect and support our undocumented residents now and into the future. Immigrants and migrant farmers have been and are the backbone of the industrial industry. No U.S.-born citizen would be doing such backbreaking work as done by immigrant labor to bring the fruits and vegetables to our tables and wine to our table, not to mention while in many cases working for substandard wages and often poor living conditions. Without the immigrant population, there would be no agricultural fields. Immigrants are part of the fabric of our society. Not only do they work as laborers in the fields, but they also work in industry, construction, retail, hospitality, healthcare, and in so many areas that are supporting our entire society. Immigrants contribute to the tax base in Lompoc, paying sales tax, property taxes, business taxes. They own their own businesses and share their unique culture, food, and music with us. Should these contributions to our community be lost due to fear of discrimination and deportation, tax revenues would fall significantly, affecting Lompoc at large. The history of the growth of the United States is true evidence that without immigrants from everywhere, we would be so much less. We would be insular in our thoughts, our ideas, and our worldview. We ask that the city council support the immigrants and undocumented neighbors by taking into consideration wholeheartedly and honestly with yourselves the proposal as submitted by Vozes Sin Fronteras. Thank you.
Counsel, mayor, I've been a resident and homeowner in Lompoc for, well, since 2016. I'm speaking today to lend my support to the proposal from Vozes Sin Fronteras. According to published stats from the Migration Policy Institute, our county has about 44,000 undocumented people living in it. Of that number, 32% of them have lived here 10 years or more. Of that number, thirty-two percent of them have lived here ten years or more. Thirty-one thousand of them are working-age adults between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-four years old. Given that our rent in our town is a little bit lower than in other communities, I would wager that many, many of them live in our town and are renters and homeowners here. These are people that live and work here, they own businesses, they shop at our stores, they pay sales tax, state and local tax, their kids go to school, they are our neighbors. And nearly one in ten workers in our state is undocumented, and many of the undocumented workers live with documented family. The current national climate around immigrants is quite hostile and has been exacerbated by heavy-handed policies on a national level, policies that are purposefully cruel and intentionally inflammatory. Reports are that agents from the ATF, DEA, and FBI are being co-opted to help ICE, as if those agents didn't already have a job to do. That's all for a display of force intended to terrify our neighbors, our friends, and taxpaying members of this community. Enacting the policies outlined in this proposal should be an easy yes, and I hope that you will take it up on the March 18th meeting. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Luévanos, and I've been a resident of Lampoke since 2000, and I'm here to tell you how hard it is to come to the U.S. legally. We started our immigration journey in the year 2000, but after 9/11, the immigration policy changed, and our case was pending until 2019. It was nineteen years, and it cost us $20,000. Our whole family helped in order for us to become legal, and I want to say for those who are under the impression that undocumented don't pay taxes, yes, we do. During tax time, there's a child credit if you have children sixteen and under. The tax credit, the full amount, does not apply to undocumented people. But when you make a little more money and you owe money to the IRS, the undocumented rule no longer applies. On April 15th, you have to pay your full amount. And I'm here to say that, as an immigrant, we are family people, we're united people, we're taught to help people, we have values, respect, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Lisette Calderon. I am part of the DSF, Voces Sinfronteras, leadership team, and we are here requesting you to take actions to support our undocumented residents during these uncertain times. Our community thrives on diversity, resilience, and the fundamental belief that every person, no matter their immigration status, deserves safety, dignity, and opportunity. Today, we face a pivotal moment. We at our crossroads whether to turn a blind eye to the struggles of our undocumented neighbors or choose to take action to ensure their protection and well-being. This proposal seeks to establish local measures that safeguard undocumented immigrants from unjust targeting, provide access to essential resources, and reaffirm our city's commitment to being a place of inclusion, support, justice, and liberty for all, who call this place home. Undocumented immigrants are integral members of our community. They are your neighbors, coworkers, caregivers, and friends. They contribute to your local economy, staff our essential industries, and enrich our cultural landscape. They are more than just their job position. Nationally, undocumented immigrants pay billions in state and local taxes each year, and many are part of mixed-status families, meaning their children and spouses are often U.S. citizens. Despite their hard work and contributions, undocumented individuals live in a constant state of fear, fear of deportation, separation from loved ones, and exclusion from critical services. This fear is not just an abstract emotion. It results in individuals avoiding hospitals when they are sick, hesitating to report crimes, and withdrawing from community life. A society that forces individuals into the shadows is not only inhumane, but also less safe and less prosperous. Imagine this, because that's all we can do to relate to these stories. Imagine a student excelling in school afraid that their family could be forced to leave overnight, or a mother who has lived here for many years and wonders whether a routine traffic stop could tear her away from her family. These are not just stories, they are lived realities of people in our community, and I urge you to ask yourself, and we must ask ourselves, are we willing to stand by while members of our community live in fear, or will we rise to protect the values of justice, dignity, and humanity? I urge you to consider our proposal. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Torres, and I am here as a member and supporter of Voces Sinfronteras Lampoke. I urge Lampoke City Council to hear our community and consider our proposal. We are striving for a better relationship between the city of Lampoke and our immigrant community. Our community must stand with our immigrant and undocumented neighbors to ensure we are keeping the support system of our youth hopeful and optimistic for a better future. I want to shed light on the importance of youth support systems by sharing the case of Dosan Rajo, a little girl that tried to commit suicide when she was bullied over her parents' immigration status. The fear of being alone and without her parents traumatized her, and she died on February 8th, 2025, at eleven years old. Unfortunately, with the accessibility of social media, I know that our youth is no stranger to fear and anxiety of losing their parents. Immigration policies directly affect family stability, which is crucial for all youth development. We ask the City Council of Lampoke to publicly support our immigrant and undocumented neighbors by teaming up with local nonprofits and uplifting their messages, and also publicly showing support by sharing factual information and helpful resources to be seen by all residents of Lampoke. We are in an era where the youth are becoming more informed about what's going on around them. We, as individuals, should show them how strong our community can be when we work together. Moving forward, it is crucial to recognize that investing in our immigrant community is investing in our youth. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valeria Resendez Ochoa. Today, I'm here representing my loved ones, the undocumented. I have lived in Lampoke since I was seven years old, so Lampoke is home to me. Back in 2010, when I began living here, there was a similar situation happening in Lampoke where ICE made checkpoints in order to deport those that were undocumented. My loved ones were constantly warning each other in fear of separation from their families. This caused a lot of stress on me because although I was young, I have always been conscious of my surroundings. Fast forward thirteen years later, and we're still in the same loophole with no immigration reform set in place to make it easier for the undocumented. As you all can imagine, the targeting of immigrant communities has brought back that continuing distress for me and most of this community. In fact, except, sorry, have brought the distress for me and most of this community, except we are adults now, and we will not just let those that were seen as essential workers during COVID-19 to be targeted. The undocumented community is needed here. In fact, in Santa Barbara County, immigrants provide labor of $1.8 billion to the agriculture industry. Agriculture is being affected right now as we speak because some people are not going to work out of fear. It is heartbreaking the measures some families are taking. They're not taking their childrens to school. They're in fear. They're scared that they'll be separated at any time, and we want there to be, the teachers to have... We want teachers to be informed on what to do in these situations because most of us are scared right now. By going after children, this irreversible damage is being done because they are our future. Damaging their ability to learn will only affect our community in the long run. After all, schools are meant for education, not children having to worry if they will be taken away. Today, I ask all of you to be empathetic towards the children, those that bring food to our tables and our neighbors, by helping Lampoke become an all-inclusive city. Lampoke will accomplish this by adopting policy SB 54, limiting law enforcement to cooperate with federal immigration agencies, because terrorizing a group of individuals, especially children, is unethical, no matter how someone may try to spin it. Lampoke will accomplish this by writing letters in support of SB 48, AB 421, and others that support our undocumented community. Lampoke will accomplish this by distributing information regarding knowing our rights. When communities all know their rights, this makes ICE work slower. This makes them look for who they need, not everybody along the line. New York and Oxfam has had success with this, so I urge us all to know our rights. Please consider putting our proposal on the agenda for deliberation at the March 18th council meeting. Voces Sinfronteras is determined to make change for the better. We hope to hear back from you soon. With love and respect, a daughter of immigrants. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yadira Rayah, a first-generation Mexican-American, and I am here to stand with the Latino community of Lampoke. I'm here with a heavy heart, standing for the many families that are scared to be torn apart, for the people who are silent due to fear, for the people that not only wake up early but work hard for a better life for their families, even if it means getting paid below the minimum wage because many don't have legal status. But not having legal status doesn't make them less human nor criminals. In fact, being here illegally is a civil offense, not a felony or criminal offense. Many say to deport them, send them back, lock them up, but why can't we start with a felon who's taking charge of the whole country on a 34 felony convictions? A community shouldn't be filled with hatred towards different racial groups. We can't be a community with hatred in our hearts and with no morals. Lampoke should be a place where we all feel free to walk the streets without fear of being racially profiled and being detained or harassed by ICE. These are our essential workers that even through a worldwide pandemic, COVID-19, they were working to put food on our tables, they were keeping our yards clean, and contributed to our communities while exposing themselves to the virus. These are not dangerous people. These are humans who came here with nothing but gave us everything in a country where freedom is always praised but make it impossible for many to obtain legal status. I hope we can come together and make Lampoke a safe, sanctuary town for everyone, including undocumented people. Creating a safe, inclusive community is a goal, and I hope more people can join in this effort to foster understanding and acceptance. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelica Torralba. I am the Lampoke Youth Organizer for Future Leaders of America. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our undocumented students and families in our community and in support with Voces Sinfronteras with their proposal. I want to express my deep concern about the overwhelming fear of family separation that is currently affecting many members of our community. Over the past month, federal immigration agents have been present in Lampoke, creating an atmosphere of anxiety and uncertainty. Families are living in constant fear of being torn apart. Youth are missing schools, school parents are missing work, and the emotional tone in our community is profound. The threat of family separation is devastating, especially for young people who face an imaginable possibility of losing their parents. The bill, sorry, this fear not only disrupts their daily lives but also threatens their future. The trauma of separation has long-term effects on their emotional well-being, their education, and their ability to succeed. This is why I want to emphasize the importance of supporting SB 48, a bill that would provide critical protection for our students and families. This bill ensures that immigration officers cannot enter our school campuses without a legal warrant and prevents schools from sharing personal or school records with immigration authorities. For our community, this bill is essential because it guarantees that our children and family can feel safe in schools without the constant fear that their personal information could be used against them. Schools should be a place where all students can learn and grow without any fear. I urge the city council to take immediate action to protect and support families in our community. Passing a resolution affirming the city's commitment to undocumented families would send a clear message that Lampoke stands for unity, safety, and dignity for all. Additionally, I ask the council to actively advocate for policies that prevent family separations and ensure that immigrant communities have access to accurate, up-to-date information about their rights. This is a moment for leadership, for compassion, and for action. I ask you to stand with the families of Lampoke and take meaningful steps to protect our community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Navarro, and I was born and raised in this beautiful town of Lampoke. I am present today in support of the proposal sent to you by Voces Sinfronteras. Currently, I am a Catholic school teacher in the community and understand firsthand how this is all affecting our community. As the oldest of four, I cannot express how terrifying it is to live day to day in fear. I am now twenty-five years old, but I was once a fourteen-year-old, scared to come home and discover my parents had been taken from me. The fear having to then take... Take on the responsibility of my younger siblings. Oh, I'm mourning the loss of my very much alive parents. This is why I am here today, because I know somewhere out there is a child constantly worried for their future. In the Book of John, God teaches us to love one another as he has loved us, and he also said that "only those without sin should be the ones to cast stones." Who are we to judge the reasoning behind our neighbors immigrating to this country? Who are we to turn our cold shoulder to our brothers and sisters in need? I ask the council to pass a resolution recognizing undocumented immigrants as vital members of our city. I urge you to add this issue to the March 18 agenda and take action. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Daisy Navarro. I am here to speak for those that can't speak for themselves. I was born and raised in Lampoke, and I'm currently a student at Allen Hancock College. Today, I stand in support of the proposal from Voces Sinfronteras. We implore you, the council, to take action to support our undocumented neighbors. Migrants are crucial to our everyday life, whether some of us would like to acknowledge that fact or not. They rise before dawn, working tirelessly to ensure fresh produce reaches our tables and construction projects stay on track, among other essential tasks. For the past twenty years, I've had the privilege of being surrounded by migrants. Many have followed the same routine, day in and day out, dedicating themselves not only to providing for their families but also to contributing to the community of Lampoke. They don't complain, they don't reject their responsibility, they are what makes the backbone of our community. These individuals work incredibly hard for us, and I am standing here as an example of their hard work and sacrifice. They deserve to receive the same effort and work from all of us. I ask that this matter be added to the agenda for discussion at the March 18 council meeting with the hope that the actions will be proposed for a council vote in the near future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Javier Valdez. I'm here to speak with the city council, Mayor Jim Roseby, in support of this proposal. I have been a community member in the city of Lampoke for coming on twenty-five years. I have grown up, gone to school, worked side by side with... I have grown up, gone to school, worked side-by-side with immigrants, families of immigrants, friends, neighbors. I am a first-generation U.S. citizen, but that has not stopped me from being close with all of our undocumented immigrants that surround us everywhere here today. I have worked side-by-side in the fields with them. I've made wine with them. I've served tables. I've done every job imaginable, and I've grown very close with all of these families and have seen some ripped apart because of the issues we are facing today. I ask you not to see us as undocumented immigrants but as people, as part of your family. We are all here for each other. We will have your back, but please, I ask you, council, mayor, to please have ours. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Macias, and I am here to stand in support of the proposal from Voices Sin Fronteras, urging you, the city council, to take meaningful action to protect and support our undocumented residents during these uncertain times. As a member of the Lompoc community and a first-generation American, I know firsthand how vital immigrants are to our community. They are the backbone of our community and the agricultural industry. Not only that, but there's so much more. They are families. They are our friends, neighbors, coworkers, and business owners. They are an integral part of our community, and they deserve to feel safe, valued, and supported in the place that they call home. Lompoc's strength lies in its diversity, which is why it is essential to stand with our undocumented neighbors. We urge the city council to support our immigrant communities by ensuring that Lompoc fully upholds state protections for undocumented residents such as SB 54 and 48. Additionally, we ask that you prioritize sharing information about available resources and collaborate with local nonprofits to organize Know Your Rights sessions. These are steps that would make a real and lasting impact. I respectfully ask you to place this issue on the agenda for the March 18 city council meeting and take meaningful steps to support our immigrant community. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're ready to work together to make Lompoc a safe and welcoming place for everyone. Thank you.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Robin Dunnitts. I grew up here in Lompoc, graduated from Lompoc High School, raised my family here, and they are now living here. And tonight, I'm here to join my voice with those in our community who are not always heard and don't feel like they can speak up at other times. I understand while some people are hesitant to support those who are not here with documents, but I don't believe mass deportations are the answer to our immigration challenges. Immigration is how the majority of the current citizens came to this country initially. It is through the hard work of migrants and the diversity they bring that built our country and provide many of the things I value about it. I believe creating a viable path forward towards citizenship for those in our country who are actively contributing, community members, would be a much better path to pursue versus the indiscriminate mass deportations. Should our borders be more secure? Most likely, but that's not the question before us. The question is how to solve a problem that is years in the making. Addressing just one side of this equation is unfair to those who are targeted and also does our community, state, and country a disservice through the disruption of workflow, economics, and families. I ask you to thoughtfully review and consider the materials Voices Sin Fronteras are presenting tonight and encourage you to adopt. The inclusive city policies is outlined and comply with all the state laws, including SB 54. I thank you for your time.
I don't think my statement is going to be as moving as a lot of the people that came before me, but thank you for listening, anyway. My name is Ash Sky Keen. I'm a parent and educator here in Lompoc. I actually had to step out of this meeting earlier to help a Cabrillo High School student with his trigonometry homework, but I'm glad I made it back in time to speak. I'm here this evening in support of the proposal from Voices Sin Fronteras, which requests that you take actions to support our undocumented residents. As a member of the Lompoc community, I ask that you stand with the immigrant population and make your position on these issues clear. Our community must stand by our immigrant and undocumented neighbors because immigrant families are important members of our community. Their children are our future. Breaking up these families would be catastrophic for our community for decades to come. Undercutting the support system of children and young adults will cause irreversible damage. School attendance numbers have already decreased due to fear. Many students still attending classes are too anxious to focus on their studies, impacting their grades and their ability to attend and graduate from college. I ask that the city council support our immigrant and undocumented neighbors by adding this resolution to the calendar for March 18 and affirm that undocumented immigrants are essential to the fabric of our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pamela Buchanan, and I've been a citizen of Lompoc since 1987 in this wonderful community. I'm a retired RN. My last years of nursing were spent in home health and hospice. I've been in the homes of many of our communities. People who are undocumented, documented, I can tell you that the kindness, making sure I had a bottle of water before I go, wanting me to sit down and share a meal even though they didn't have very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say, I am one of those white people that my family goes back to the 1600s. I cannot go back and undo that they enslaved people or that they took the land of the Native Americans, but I can be here tonight and say, do what's right. Using examples of one or two cases where someone who happened to be undocumented hurt someone, that really angers me because, as we know, if you look at the statistics, the immigrant community, especially the undocumented, are the least likely to commit crimes. And as someone pointed out early, she knew of thousands of others, you know, birth certificate from day one or go back your history several hundred years where the criminals really lie. These are good people. Please do what's right. Stand up, do the right thing. And also, the film that was mentioned, Separation, I learned about it recently. You either need to read, learn, or talk to people to see who they really are and what the feelings really are, what really happens to families. Someone mentioned the little girl who committed suicide. Is that the kind of community we want in Lompoc? Where our children are bullied at school and they die because they're afraid of losing their parents? Stand up and do what's right. Do everything you can to protect all the people of our community. They're wonderful people. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Nicolai. You had one bite already. We have another oral communication later, but you got your three minutes already once. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Well, my hands hurt, so I hope your butts are a little sore from sitting there for so long. My name is Carson Link. I was born and raised here in Lompoc, and I am obviously here to support the proposal proposed by Voices Sin Fronteras. As a member of this community, I think, you know, it is undeniable the importance of the immigration of those who have immigrated here and especially those who are undocumented. Just to bring this down to, you know, something as basic as our economics, obviously, we are a struggling town at times. Santa Barbara County as a whole benefits from the agricultural industry, something to the tune of almost $2 billion a year. Much of those workers out in the fields, it has changed. We definitely pick a different kind of flower now, but they are essential. They're over half of our workforce. And in other communities where the fear has taken hold and it is picking season, you can see this, look at the Salinas Valley, there are oranges rotting on trees because they have lost 70% of their labor force. They're begging college kids to come out and pick what they can take and take it home. Please come out and pick our fruit. It is rotting in our fields. So, do we want that to happen here? And we are already seeing warning signs from the industry that that may happen. Most importantly, perhaps, is the strawberry industry who have already been contacting their state officials, very worried that their labor force is not going to show up in Oxnard and Santa Barbara County. So, I think what we're asking for is fair. We're not asking for a sanctuary city. I think if you read the proposal, that's very, very clear. What we're asking for is for the city council to help turn down the temperature and the fear in the community by passing a resolution that says that you support our undocumented immigrants and understand the necessity that they play in our community. I think that I would love to see this taken up at the March 18 meeting. Whether you guys decide to vote on that today and decide to put that onto the agenda or you take your time and deliberate on it and let us know when the next agenda is posted, that is great, but I just hope that the next time that these folks are here, it's in partnership because that's what we want. We're not here to yell at you. We really want to work with you to figure out ways that the city doesn't need to overstep its legal boundaries. You know, all we're asking is that you can comply with California law and also just make this proclamation saying that you support our undocumented folks. I think it's very fair, and I hope you'll give it your fullest consideration. Again, that might not be tonight, but I hope to see it on the agenda for March 18, just for deliberation and maybe for some staff recommendations. So, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'm not an immigrant, but I'm a third-generation resident of Lompoc. My great-grandparents' names are on a plaque up at Bodger's where the old farmworker camp used to be. I've lived here all my life, and I'm going to take a little different note. I'm going to thank you. Mr. Starwutt, you've appointed my young Latina daughter to a very important planning commission recently. Mr. Mosby, you appointed my wife to the police commission. I've engaged with Mr. Bridge. You can see me having coffee almost weekly basis with Mr. Vega discussing all the issues that are applicable to the Latino, the Mexican community, and I want to thank you for that. I think it's important that a lot of times you don't get recognized for what you do because what you do is quietly, individually. I am so ecstatic to see this engagement by the community. I haven't seen these chambers filled like this in a long time. It's great, and I'm here to share with the community that you men are very open to one-on-one relationships to improve the community. I'm proof of that. I have been able to go in and bring many issues, whether it was about crime, gangs, utilities, things that impacted everyday living, people struggling within the city. You've always been open, and you've always keep channels, and I'd like to acknowledge that. Although we say it's not political, this is a political issue, but it is a large part of your constituency, so take consideration what everybody has said. But I want to leave on a positive note and say thank you and for the community to understand that you are open and that you have engaged in many of the issues that are here before you today. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I am the final one. First of all, I would like to say thank you for having me. My name is Anthony Bickery, and I am born and raised a Lompoc community resident. As you've heard throughout this public comment, our group, along with local allies, are asking that you stand with us and seeking a resolution for change. Throughout this comment, it is hard to turn a deaf ear to the powerful voices we have heard tonight. Each and every one of them, unique in their own way, each and every one of them, powerful in their own way. They all got up here and they are talking to you, person to person, looking into your eyes, hoping you guys can make a change for them, their friends, their family, their relatives, close ones, other community members. They are giving you the power because at the end of the day, you have the power to make the change that we are asking for. Many hard workers are found within our agriculture industry, within our small businesses, our schools, churches, service industry, hospitals, our neighborhoods, because there is no difference between those born here and those, the migrants, who are coming here for a better change. As many before me had mentioned, we are actively trying to get the right information into the right hands. You, the city council, and elected mayor can streamline that process tremendously. We ask that you all take into strong consideration upholding the policies of Senate Bill SB 54 while also advocating for laws like SB 48 or AB 421. On top of what we can do externally for our city, internally, we ask that you help us put together a screening of the movie Separated, along with a Know Your Rights event, where we can get information to multiple people throughout our community together where they can actually learn and not be swayed or influenced by the hysteria that surrounds migrants and deportation. With the help of you, we want to make Lompoc in the right direction, a direction where knowledge, honor, dignity, and respect are at the forefront. Please consider putting this proposal on the agenda for deliberation at the March 18 council meeting. Hopefully, after we make our first step as the community, we can ignite a chain reaction for our surrounding cities within the Santa Barbara County. I appreciate this opportunity to speak and even more so on a topic that is so important in today's world. Let us remember this: cruelty lasts a minute, but love lasts a lifetime. Empathy goes around, and before you know it, it eventually comes back to each and every one of you. Please hear us all, all of our voices, and all the many others who weren't able to make it tonight, when we ask that you help us make this slice of California a little more inclusive. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah Schultz. I'm a Lompoc resident. Thank you for having me. I just found out about this, so I didn't have time to prepare, but I could not be here and not say something. I am a teacher. I teach English as a second language. Every single one of my students is an immigrant. They make my life better. I have a job because of the immigrants in this community. It's so wonderful to see people who wake up at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, go to work all day, take a quick shower, and go to school in the evenings until 9:00 PM just so that they can learn English to be better members of this community and this society, so that they can help their children become stronger members of this society. Our community is better with immigrants, documented or undocumented, and I'm here in support of the proposal by Voices Sin Fronteras, and I thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Ayda Núñez, and I'm not only here in support of the proposal from Voices Sin Fronteras, I'm also here as a DACA recipient and an undocumented immigrant. And I have to thank all of you for making me feel seen and for allowing me to raise my voice today. We have the fire chief here, the police chief here, a police officer. We have all of you, and I am simply asking that you recognize our existence and that you give me a little time to have some dignity when I am forced to relocate to my homeland. If DACA goes away, it is already illegal in Texas, it will personally affect me. I am not a first-generation U.S.-born citizen, but I am a first-generation homebuyer, taxpayer, and I work for a startup out of Silicon Valley. If that's not breaking ceilings, I don't know what is. I am trying to really be the voice of the people that don't have the courage to show up, and this means a lot to me. I really, really, really would really appreciate that you pass this resolution, not only to remind those of us in this community that are DACA recipients, that we exist, but to give us the voice and the respect that we reserve. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for hearing us all. I really appreciate it.
Anybody else for public comment? You good? All right, so those of you who are new to our procedures here, we don't comment on public comment. We take the public comment. We have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to make council requests and such like that, so just to let you know the formalities of what the meeting and how it proceeds. So, we're not ignoring you. We heard you, but we do have our process. So, with that, public comment is closed. We will move on to appointments. So, we have council appointments to the beautification So we have a council appointment to see the Beautification Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. They're in your book. So we have a lot of great stuff on the agenda. We got a sewer rate increase coming up, too. That ought to be fun for discussion. That's what I thought you guys were here for. I'm ready to make a motion.
I think Dave Baker might be mine. Make an appointment for Dave Baker. You got him?
Yeah. So Parks and Rec, does everybody know what you're looking at?
I'm going to do Parks and Rec.
I'll do Parks and Rec first?
Okay.
I know both Dave and Diane are out of my district, but I know that both Dave and Diane are out of my district, so if there's, you know, I'll appoint Dave if somebody else could pick up Diane. She's a great lady.
Did you have one, Councilmember Vega? No? Councilmember Ball, did you have one at this time?
I have one that's current, but I guess he's expired, so I'm going to get him to resubmit.
Okay. So currently, then, we have a motion for Dave Baker, for Councilmember Bridge. That's your make a motion?
I did.
Push your buttons. Somebody want to second it? We got a Ball with a second. Go ahead and vote. That passes 5-0. Let's go to Beautification Commission. Yes.
I'd like to nominate, renominate Alyssa Imano to that.
All right. I would nominate Chelsea Fabi on mine.
Can I nominate?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Susan Gallagher.
Susan Gallagher, okay. Beautification Commission, anybody, there's Elizabeth is left. Is that anybody else's? No?
I don't have any. I'd like to see.
Oh, okay. Well, we have the three. Did you want to make it in a motion? You want me to do the motion? So the motion would be myself with Chelsea.
I'll second.
Well done. Councilmember Ball with Alyssa, and Councilmember Starbuck with Susan Gallagher. So that would be my motion. Do you get a second? Go ahead and vote. Who's left? Bridge, you have to vote. And that's a 5-0. And that's where we have a Beautification Commission, but...
Mayor Mosby?
Yes. There we go.
I think there were three other applicants for Parks and Rec Commission that were former commissioners that are eagerly awaiting to be reappointed.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, we're doing Parks and Rec.
We did Parks and Rec. We just did Baker.
You didn't call me.
Do you have somebody?
I think my light's burned out over there.
Your light's burned out? Okay.
Over there.
Go ahead and speak, Councilmember Starbuck.
I would absolutely like to make a motion that Stephanie Sosito be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, that's his motion on that one. Go ahead and push your motion made button. We're going back to Parks and Rec Commission.
Sorry, the computer's updating, so...
Oh, all right.
Yeah, it's being very temperamental right now.
All right.
So is Stephanie Sosito the only other appointment that is going to be made on Parks and Rec tonight?
I believe so. Everybody else?
So I'm just curious, and I'm going to show my lack of knowledge here. It's not clear to me how many slots we have open and which ones are ours. I just did Dave, but how many slots are open in Parks and Recs?
All of them. So Parks and Rec were deleted from the Minnesota code, and one larger commission was made, and then when the new council was sat, they decided, you guys decided you wanted to separate them again, so this is all brand-new. There are no councils, there are no commissions, no commission members seated for beautification and/or Parks and Rec.
So tonight...
It's definitely a day for voting, too, because...
It says my mic's on. I don't... So just for clarification for me again, there's four people here, and we have four or five open slots.
Five.
Five. And today, after this effort, two of them will be filled.
Unless other council members take up these other two appointments, yes.
Okay, and we have two people on this list that want to work, so if the other councilmen's didn't have people, they could select one of these if they wanted.
Right. There are no districts...
Boundaries.
Right.
Okay.
So everybody is available.
All right. Thank you for the clarity.
You're welcome.
And Diane was a commissioner recently, and so was Isla. So we would appreciate getting our commission full.
Yeah, we picked Dave and Stephanie.
Councilmember Bridge did earlier. Dave Baker. Currently, right now, Councilmember Starbuck's picking Stephanie. Did you know Diane or Isla that you were looking at?
Diane's previous. I don't know Isla.
Can you remind us who was attached to which council member? Maybe that'll help jog us a little bit?
I believe Ms. Thatcher Geese was Councilmember Vega's appointment previously. I do not remember who appointed Ms. Burns.
I think that was Councilmember Vega's also, but I'm not sure.
We had a couple of them. Busy. All right, so retract. I know the person I had retracted, but I have somebody else that didn't get their papers working, so... With that, we'll go back to Councilmember Starbuck's, Stephanie's motion. That's your motion?
Yes.
Push your button.
Sorry.
Somebody want to push a second for it?
It must be updating.
And with Starbuck with his motion, Councilmember Ball with a second. That passes 5-0.
Before we leave this, I also know that on the Beautification Commission, I believe that perhaps this is confusing anybody, but Elizabeth Weir, her name was listed as Lee Weir, and I think that was Councilmember Vega's previous appointment to beautification.
Was she put on another commission? I'm sorry. Was she put on another commission at all? Because I remember her name coming up, but she's not a member of another commission, right?
No. Isla Thatcher Geese had put in an application for Planning Commission, but there was another appointment to that.
You know, I'd be willing to appoint Lee Weir to the beautification. I just wasn't sure what the restrictions were, but it says a large.
Okay, that's, is motion number a second, Elizabeth Weir? So we got a Vega, motion, Bridge on a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
Just for one more little bit of clarity, today, when we leave this meeting, there will not be a quorum for Parks and Recs, right?
No. That's correct. There's not a quorum, correct. Yes.
That passes 5-0. Okay, council appointments. Moving on. Introduction to the adoption of ordinance 1723, parentheses, 25, 6742, parentheses, 25, which is regulating camping and storage of personal property within city limits and on city-owned property outside city limits. And introduction of ordinance number 1724, parentheses, 25, regulating the use of transit facilities. That with the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. In 2024, the United States Supreme Court issued its decision in City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, and that was landmark decision that clarified that it is not a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, the cruel and unusual punishment clause, for cities to prohibit homeless encampments and sleeping and having personal living accommodations on public property, regardless of the status of the availability of shelter beds within the community. That clarified a very uncertain area of law, where the law was different in different parts of the country. So the law is now clear that cities can prohibit homeless encampments and camping on public property. The ordinance before you, well, I came to the city council at council's request last year after the decision came down to explain what the new law was and what the restrictions that still remain on the city are. The council then requested to bring back this ordinance that you have before you tonight attached to the staff report. There's actually two ordinances, and there is a resolution. The, and I'm going to go through exactly what those two ordinances and resolution do right now. So the main ordinance tonight is an ordinance that will prohibit camping on any public or private property in the city. And there are some exceptions there for designated campgrounds or for camping on private property with the permission of the owner of the private property. But that's the main heart of the ordinance that's before you tonight, is it prohibits camping on public and private property. It also prohibits storing personal property in a way that would obstruct doorways, sidewalks, or other areas of public property, and it also prohibits a person from using their own body to obstruct doorways, driveways, sidewalks, and that those types of areas of public property, building entrances as well, and streets. What the ordinance allows the city to do is if there is an obstruction on, let's say, the sidewalk, the city can immediately move that obstruction so that then the sidewalk can be used for its intended purpose, which is for the ingress and egress of people. If the city would like to actually remove the personal property from the public right-of-way, then there's a process in the ordinance where we give a 24-hour notice if it is personal property, or a 48-hour notice if it is an encampment or a camping type of property. We give that notice. We place that notice on the property or with the person if they are present, and it says that that property must be removed from the public property within 48 hours. If the property is not removed from the public property within 48 hours, then the city has the right then to remove it, and we give the person a notice that the city will store the property for 60 days. We tell them the location where it's going to be stored. If there is no person with the property, then we post the notice where the property was located. And that notice, like I said, says that the city will store it for 60 days. It notifies where the city will be storing the property, and that it is available for pickup if a person would like to come and pick it up, and that person would need to provide some proof that they own the property, or they'd need to be able to describe it in some way, or where it was left or where it was located. Those kind of noticing and storage requirements are requirements that have developed in the case law regarding cleanup of homeless encampments over the past 15, 20 years in the state of California. Those same regulations that are in the ordinance for property within the city, we also have a resolution before you tonight that applies those same rules to property outside city limits that is owned by the city. So our ordinances don't apply outside city limits, but we, the city does own some property outside city limits, and we can restrict conduct on that property through the way of a resolution. So the resolution does exactly the same as the ordinance does, it's just outside city limits on property that the city owns. So that would be things like the Riverbed property, River Park, and I believe Riverbend Park is also outside city limits. There is another ordinance before you tonight that I'm calling in the staff report, the Transit Facilities Ordinance, and this is with regard to transit facilities that include things like bus stop shelters, bus stop benches, and the area that's required for the loading and unloading of passengers on public transit, like Colt or other buses that come through the city. What the ordinance does is it prohibits camping inside of those facilities. It prohibits storing personal property inside of those facilities, taking up more space on a bench than is required by one seated person. And it also has a opening and closing time for those transit facilities. So no one will be allowed to be, to occupy a transit facility like a bus stop or a bus bench between the hours of 30 minutes before the first bus is scheduled to arrive that day, or before 30 minutes before the first bus is scheduled to arrive, and then 30 minutes after the last bus is scheduled to leave, no one can occupy the bus shelter or bus And that applies to transit facilities that are owned or controlled by the city, and it also prohibits attaching any item to a transit facility if there is personal property stored within a bus shelter at a bus stop, and it's preventing the use of the shelter by others who are intending to use it as a bus stop or a bus shelter. Or if anyone has attached an item to the bus shelter, then the city will have the authority under this ordinance to come and remove that property from the bus shelter and place it outside of the bus shelter or outside of the bus stop without any notice. Again, if the city wants to completely remove it from public property and store it, then we need to provide the 48-hour or 24-hour notice. I've tried to encapsulate the ordinances in the resolution that are before you tonight, but I am open for questions. The staff recommendation is to introduce the two ordinances, 1723 and 1724, and adopt the resolution 6742. So I'm available for questions.
Any question for the city attorney?
I have one. I've been waiting for him, but he doesn't look this way.
I do. No, you don't. Look, I'm not getting any, I have no mechanics on my lights here. Look.
I believe you.
It's broken.
Never mind.
I see a little green light, little micro light over. Councilmember Vega, there you go. I'm going to ask on you whether you want it or not now. No, I'm invisible.
Jeff, this goes a long ways to cleaning up our city to a point, correct? I mean, this, before it was, before COVID, everything changed, you know, and it goes back to allowing our city to be cleaned up, so to speak. In my estimation, if there was camping at a bus stop, which is detrimental to our bus system, which is great, that can also be viewed as... bus system, which is great, that can also be viewed as public camping also if they were to violate the hours of operation or whatever. Am I correct in that kind of estimation?
You are correct, yes. This is kind of like a belt and suspenders because I think both ordinances would apply to.
I think it goes a long ways to public safety, to help public safety also for kids, for children and minors and everybody that has to go by people that are camping out and stuff that maybe feel unsafe. I know if I had young kids, I wouldn't want them to be subject to that. So thank you very much. I think this ordinance is going to be, go a long ways to helping us clean up Wompok. So not sure if there's anything else, but I'm, I'm pretty excited to see something like this come back and allow the, the police officers to be able to enforce this without fear of repercussion. Thank you.
Councilor Ball.
So I, I think there's definitely a clamoring for the city to continue to work on this issue and to do something, for sure. I, I have no question about that. I think, I always, when I look at some of these things, I look at, I try to think about impacts and unintended consequences. Fair enough, right? So I guess, point blank, just, let's start here. This is telling me that we're not allowing camping on both public and private property, extending perhaps into the Riverbed. So am I allowed to assume that it becomes illegal to be homeless in Wompok?
Well, I guess that's how you want to define homeless. I mean, there are shelters that are available for homeless and we are not criminalizing any particular status of any person. It's the way that you legally have to regulate public property is by making certain conduct illegal. So the conduct that we're making illegal is using public property for living, living accommodations, like camping on public property and also on private property. That's what we're doing.
I feel like that's a fair answer. Now, again, it's, it's a little bit loaded to say that we have adequate shelter and that there's a system in place for everyone to go to. That's definitely a moving target. Let's see, what else am I going to say about that? I had a couple other points that I wanted to make. Talk about logistics. As far as I understand it, there's a good number of folks living in the Riverbed. Is that fair? More than five? More than 50? Somewhere in there? So what I'd be curious about is how do we, again, hear me out, I'm not necessarily against something, but I, as I drive around town, I see a lot of, don't litter, no littering allowed here. See lots of signs where we had good intentions, we passed resolutions, ordinances and so forth, but we don't necessarily have the teeth or the system in place to enforce that law that was a good idea. So I'm, I'm curious about the logistics of this year, especially storing people's property. Where and how have we worked through those logistics? Have we talked about those impacts and who's taken charge of that? My fear is that we start something and then we can't sustain that effort and no one believes or takes it seriously. So I'm, I'm curious, is this just a new ordinance, a new sign that we put up or is this something that we can actually use to help the community?
Many of the procedures you've just described, we've done in the past. So we worked with, excuse me, we worked with solid waste to obtain some larger trash cans that have locks put on top of them. So if we were to hypothetically arrest somebody who is unhoused in the community, we have to store their property for 60 days. We would then itemize that property, put it in the can, secure it with a lock, and then that person would have the responsibility to get with us once they were out of custody and make arrangements to go to the site where we keep those cans and have access to whatever it is that's in there. And it, it's no different, what, what this code is describing is something we kind of do already when it comes to the property side of things.
Can you read into the record, Mr. Attorney, eight forty seventy? Might answer some questions. It's on page seven.
Page seven. Eight forty oh seventy?
Yes.
The new proposed section eight forty oh seventy says, "Prior to taking any enforcement action against any person under this chapter, the enforcement officer shall offer information to such person regarding any available housing or shelter and other health and human services that the enforcement officer reasonably believes are relevant to the person's individual circumstances. However, failure to offer such information is not grounds to invalidate or challenge the enforcement action." So that's correct, Mayor, and thank you for reminding me about that. Anytime before we go to enforce any provision of these ordinances that I just described, there is a requirement here that we provide that person information about resources for housing or other health and human services resources that are relevant to their circumstances.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question on it? So we, again, to the chief's point, we're already doing that, right? If we, if we interact with this population, we're already suggesting, hey, here's some resources you might, so we're already doing that, right?
That's correct.
But we're not doing anything more than that. I mean, we're not talking about big picture solutions and making sure we've got parts of our community to house people. We're just saying, this is the available resources we have, good luck, essentially.
We've worked historically with the nonprofits that offer these type of services and the county to try and get people out of the environment they're in and to a better living condition.
So I'm, I'm all for us, they're on the line somewhere. Obviously, we have to have something that we can enforce. I just hope we do it thoughtfully and consider all the impacts all the way through.
Councilor Ridge.
I just kind of have a quick question. The people who are living in their mobile homes, will this apply to them, to the RVs that we see on the street?
This would not apply to sleeping in vehicles.
How would, how would you discriminate that? What, what part of this says that?
Well, first of all, we have a separate sleeping in vehicles ordinance in the city. We also have an RV parking ordinance that we can use, an overnight RV parking ordinance that we can use for those purposes.
So I understood that and I see that that's implicit. I just was curious if one could. Is this a duplicate rule in that case then, or?
Potentially. As I'm rereading the definition of camping, it may potentially be possible to use this ordinance to regulate RV dwellers as well, but I don't believe that we would. I think we would use the.
It's not the intent.
That is not the intent, and I think we would use those other ordinances that are specifically designed for it.
Other questions? Councilor Ball.
One quick question is, so again, we talked about private or public land or city-owned land to that point about RVs or not. Is the city streets, is that city-owned property? Is that the way we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open this up to public comment. It's your time for public comment on this matter.
Hello, again, counsel. Again, my name is Michaela Cregness. I actually do live near the Riverbed and per Councilman Ball's questions, I have my own personal concerns regarding the idea of more people being ushered to live in the Riverbed area. We do have that very nice path that goes out from, I don't know, around Ninth Street around Riverside and then down towards Central. I used to walk my dog out there pretty consistently and it got to a point where, just due to somebody, you know, kind of randomly coming out of the bushes, I got to a point where even though it's one of the best paths for me to enjoy being outdoors in my neighborhood, it started to feel unsafe to traverse alone. And I personally have lots of concerns with anything that would make it harder for people who are already in dire straits to have any amount of stability. My father is on the chair, or he is on the council for Good Samaritan, and they do a lot of good works, but it is very difficult, especially in this community, to get people the help that they need. And stability is a huge part of mental health for people who are already struggling. I don't know necessarily that I have a suggestion on what should be done. I do have concerns about this being the way forward, and that is from the mindset of somebody who is concerned about the general safety and comfort levels that we have walking around the area currently. I do feel that there is a major mental health crisis happening in our town. Even sometimes as I walk as far from Ross to Albertson's, I've experienced people who didn't seem to be completely necessarily aware of where they are or, or just who weren't doing the best. But I don't personally, as somebody who has been affected by somebody in their family being homeless, I do have concerns about what it means to essentially, and I know that this might be an overstatement, but in some ways criminalize people having no ability of having a permanent place to live. And I know, or I've heard at the very least, that the shelter has limited hours, so in terms of storing property long-term, it's not necessarily always something that people can do. So I, I would ask that if you choose to move forward with this, to make sure that you are investing in those communities in a way that gives people the opportunity to have permanent locations where they can store their things so that then the little things that they do own do not just get taken from them and, and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Fellow counsel, Karen Hollenstein. I think that this ordinance, these two ordinances have been thought out pretty extensively and take people's needs into account. The impact from the poor policies of our state have left us in this situation where we have very high drug use in our homeless population, chemical drug dependency, where they are dissolving their brain matter away permanently and leaving us in a situation from the state level where SB four three and Proposition One are expecting to take care of this dependent disabled population. Now, that is a very big challenge for us to take on as a city, but you do have to start somewhere and give law enforcement the ability to do their jobs within our community. So what I wish you would do, will do is address the real issue underlying the problems we're having with the homeless population that is transient, that comes through our town. We can't allow them to live in the Riverbed and establish these camps or else we'll have more transient people coming from other areas that are being pushed out from other areas. So I support this personally. Thank you.
Oh, I wasn't planning to speak again, but just this ordinance seems sort of, I was listening, and if it's sort of, it's already happening, it seems maybe a little unnecessarily cruel to take what little houseless people already have, you know? As I said, I'm a mental health professional and people that are having mental health crises, whether those are substance-induced or not, you know, if they come back to where they live, their stuff is gone, maybe there is a notice of where it is that they might not have the wherewithal to go get it and, or the means. So I just, I don't know, I wanted to say something because I'm still here and listening and have the ability to, so. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Wompok. I think it's, it's due. This is not for, nor do I think that our police would ever target homelessness. This is for, one, a business owner such as myself shows up at my office and there's an individual there who's defecated in the front door, urinated, using hyperdemic needles, has their property sitting there and refuses to leave. In the past, not under this chief, but under other previous chiefs, call in and say it's a civil matter. Okay? It's, you know, those are the things that you're going to be able to clean up. Those are the key issues you're going to be able to address. I've had people with open fires on my balconies, open fires on my roof of my commercial buildings. I've come home to people in the yards. And again, not under this current police chief, but in the past chiefs, have they committed a crime? Have they assaulted? They're in my yard, they're with their staff. So we have to have some teeth for the most extreme situations. You have to be able to do something for the quality of life of the residents. Ironically, somebody could dump a TV in my back alley and I can get a code violation and, and have to pay a fine. But somebody could come and put up a tarp and start a fire and, and start collecting things and there's nothing you could do to them. That's what the problem you're trying to fix. And so although I want you to be very compassionate and I'm certain our chief, he's, I'm certain he will exercise excellent judgment in, in, in carrying out these duties, when it is necessary, we need to have the laws on the books that allow us to fix the most egregious problems in the community. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back. The attorney, I have a question on, on the item in page five. And it's about eight forty, zero forty, C. And any unintended item of personal property that is creating obstruction and violation of the section may immediately be, be moved by an enforcement officer to an adjacent location where it will no longer create an obstruction. One of the concerns I have, that, I mean, a sidewalk is, is blocked by these materials. Are we just going to push this over to private property adjacent to it or do you have a solution for that?
So this part of the ordinance is when there is a piece of personal property that's like blocking the sidewalk. And this is not when the city's going to come and totally remove it and store it, but this is just something that the city can do to immediately prevent or remove the blockage. Can take the property and can move it to the side. And the intent is not, it's not the intent. What should not happen is the city should not put it on private property. It needs to be moved to a different place on public property that, where it will no longer create an obstruction. So we could put a clarification in there, may be immediately moved by an enforcement officer to an adjacent location on public property where it will no longer create an obstruction.
Okay. I don't want, I think would be good to create, like, like it says, kind of good to be here that it's kind of getting scooted on somebody's lawn or something, but I appreciate that clarification. Another thing, maybe the city manager could answer this one. The Riverbed cleanup before, you remember how many pounds of garbage they pulled out of the Riverbed? I mean, was it like a million pounds?
I don't know poundage, but it was a lot.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is not little, little something. We're trying to not let this build up to the levels that it was before that, and if you go look at 12th Street over there, it's, there's continual battle over there that's happening. And to tolerate what's going on, it's, so I want to thank you guys for bringing this together. There, I don't see anybody, council, you guys ready for a motion on this? Ready for a motion? Ready for a motion? I'll make the motion with the recommendation to change as per the city attorney. Oh, gee, many crickets. What are you making?
You took too long. I'm going to, exactly what you said.
He's going to make my motion over there, adding that on. Okay, I'll second that then.
You want me to turn my name on?
You're fast, you're fast.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just be open to it and shut me down if I'm the lone man out here. So, look, I understand the meaning behind this. I understand us giving more tools to law enforcement. I understand all of those things. I just want to know if there's an openness to counsel, as you've done with a couple of other items. The proof is in the pudding, long term. Is it actually making a dent or making some sort of, is this something we could bring back in six months and get a, and honestly, six months, a year, you tell me, but how can we measure whether this is an effective tool unless we get some sort of feedback or some data? So I don't know if that's something you'd entertain with the motion, but I mean.
Well, could you, is that something that you feel that you see the tangibility of this ordinance, that you could in six months come back or so and tell us what you think?
Absolutely. We could, we could take a look and see what the numbers are today and compare those numbers to what they are six months from now. I can tell you that the city manager and I took a drive two weeks ago, and we saw significant change on the streets with the RV parking ordinance, that people were starting to adhere to the rules that the council passed and making sure that their RVs were properly permitted and not just sitting in certain areas. And those that weren't, the officers that were making those contacts and those people were willingly moving those and trying to abide by the ordinances that you passed. So it's completely trackable. We can take a look at it and bring some numbers back.
So would you like to modify the motion, add on top that within six months plus or minus?
Yeah, I'm okay with that if he's going to give us updates on the progress. Is that what you're asking for?
I think for me, because I'm on the fence a little bit about this, I don't know if it's going to work, I'm willing to give it a shot, but I want to know whether it's actually making progress, so.
If we're looking for an update on the progress.
If you're looking for consensus, I'd love to have this come back to see if it's actually working, or we can improve it.
So we have the motion with the correction, and in six months plus or minus, coming back with the update on how it's working? Yes, question?
Six months after the ordinances are enacted?
Correct.
Okay.
Plus or minus, doesn't have the exact date?
Not six months from today.
Yes.
I think visually, we're going to see the improvement, and it's going to be a tool for business owners and private. I think it's pretty simple that we're going to see visually and hopefully have a tool if you're ever impacted by it, okay?
And if it's a positive report and feedback, then we know we've made a good decision, and it's helping our community. I think that's great.
Yeah, it's long overdue, but I appreciate.
So my second would go along with that correction, so.
Okay.
Moved to the second, and it's called for the vote. Five zero. Very good, moving on. What do we want next? One o'clock. All right, item number eight. Council review and discussion of handbook for commissioners, committees, and boards regarding public safety commission. I think that's, council member Bridge, do you have something?
I do. I'd like to move this back about 45 days. The chief and I have been talking about it, and I think we might be coming to a consensus, and if we could have a little more time to hash it out, I think that that would be wise. I don't know if we have to get a council concurrence on that.
Council member Starbuck?
Which chief?
The one shaking his head yes.
That's the fire chief.
Starbuck, you need glasses, too.
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back in 45 days.
Did you have something, council member Ball? They came back. City clerk?
Is that April 15?
Yeah.
Plus or minus?
Yeah, there's no magic. I don't have that date memorized, is what I'm saying, so.
If that works with the city manager?
That's the second meeting in April, or?
Yeah, it's fine.
Or the next meeting in May?
Either, whatever the city manager has the ability to schedule.
As long as it's not overwhelming on a certain day, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
You good? It's good on the 15th, okay? So that's a motion to move it in 45 days.
It was a council concurrence, I don't know if you need a motion, but.
City attorney, clarification?
If there's no objection, it is so ordered.
There's no objection, you got it. All right, that was easier. Did you want, I know he's getting cranky. Somebody have a Snickers? Council member Vega needs a Snickers bar. Okay. New business. Presentation of wastewater cost of service study and notice of public hearing for June 17, 2025, for proposed wastewater rate adjustment in accordance with Prop 218. Where'd everybody go? That's where they, Avi, where'd they all go? That's over there, all here. Do you need a break? Okay, let's go, let's go and roll for a five minute.
Five minute break.
Everybody good with that? You guys, you guys, five minute. I never get time off when I want a tractor. We are back. Back with a new business, number nine. Robert Cross, financial service manager. Come on down. Yeah, you did.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I am here to introduce item number nine, the wastewater cost of service study. For some background, in April 2022, the city received a time schedule order from the California Water Quality Control Board. We were required to take steps to meet new discharge requirement levels and a cost of service study to ensure that we would be able to fund the improvements that that requires. We contracted with Utility Financial Solutions to conduct the cost of service study and a rate study. Utility Financial Students and Solutions is a national leader in providing rate studies to municipal utilities and conduct, they conducted the electric rate study that was presented back in September 2024. They're back tonight to present the wastewater study. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Beauchamp.
Welcome. Hello, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here again and discuss the wastewater cost of service study. As Bob had mentioned, we do work, I have a weird background. I have a degree in water purification technology, actually spent eight years working at a wastewater treatment plant. That sounds like a weird background for a rate consultant. I also got my degree in accounting and passed CPA exam, and I have a master's degree in business. We've been doing rate studies for 24 years. We've done work in 45 states, including several islands, the Caribbean, Guam, Barbados, Bermuda. And what I'm here to talk about is right now, when you look at the, I'm going to give you a summary of what I'm going to talk about. If you want to go to the next slide. Oh, right here. Okay. What, I'm going to give you a summary of what I'm going to discuss. Right now, the wastewater department is, you look at the cash, we're in good shape. The age of your wastewater system, it's 50% depreciated, which is on average. The last time you had a rate increase was 2017, and you've been able to absorb increases in costs since 2017, in spite of inflation compounding at a rate of 28% since then, plus construction costs have increased by about 44% in the water industry. And when you look at the financial projection moving forward, what we're trying to do is to make sure that the funds are available to do the capital improvements, specifically the ones that are mandated by the state of California. And what we did is a long-term financial model. I'm going to show you five years of it. The model actually goes out like 20 years, but, and I'm going to discuss three key financial targets with you. One is debt coverage ratio. And what debt coverage ratio is, is when you go to issue bonds, debt, you have two forms of debt. One is what's called general obligation bonds, which is secured by the property taxes of the community, and those don't typically come with any what's called covenants. The other one is revenue bonds, which are secured by the revenue of the utility. And as part of that, you have to maintain these bond covenants, all right? What you're going to see is we're falling below those bond covenants, because what's happened is the margins have been eaten away by the inflationary increases that have occurred since the last rate adjustment. We also determine what the minimum level of cash that the utility needs to maintain in reserves. And what that is designed to do is ensure that we have the cash in reserves to fund the working capital needs of the utility. And you'll see that right now, we look pretty good, but you also see going forward that we're in a cash burn situation. What I just described is what we call minimums. We have to set rates that achieve your bond ordinance, your debt coverage, so we don't go in technical default on the debt, and we need the cash to pay the bills. But determining revenue requirements is not an exact science. All right, so what we do is we have those minimums, and we also set an upper boundary. The upper boundary is what we call a target operating income. What a target operating income is, is if you put like a million dollar asset in service, say a 20-year life, every year on the books, the accountants depreciate it at $50,000 a year. At the end of 20 years, you theoretically have recovered a million dollars, but when you go to replace it, it's going to cost you more than that, because every year the inflationary increase in the asset's replacement costs go up. That target operating income becomes our upper boundary. We don't want to exceed that, because if we do, we're then overcharging our customers. All right? There are times you have to. If utilities don't keep up with their rates, and they let it degrade, the cash degrade, then they need a large rate adjustment to reverse the cash burn situation that they're in, and then they exceed that target, and that's what we want to try to avoid. The, what I'm here to talk to you about is a rate adjustment plan for the utility so we can remain financially stable. And I put together three different scenarios for you to consider, all with varying degrees of impacts on customers, all right? Now, as part of that, I'm looking for input and direction, because we haven't solidified the rate design yet, and that's what I'm looking for tonight. The, now, as part of that, we also do what's called a cost of service study. What a cost of service study does is it identifies how much each class should pay relative to their impacts on the infrastructure. And I'll go through those results as I go through the study, but before we do that, whenever you build a financial model, one of the key things is the assumptions that you use, okay? Assumptions like inflation. We assumed a modest inflation rate, 4% in '24, followed by 3%. I think '24 actually came in around 2.6, 2.8. We assumed a certain amount of growth, very modest growth in the village, no growth in the city of Lumpoke. And then the capital improvement plan. This is a capital improvement plan that's in the documents, all right? But I do want to make you aware, remember I mentioned that your system is 50% depreciated, which is right on average with the national average, but if you look out five years, your system becomes 62% depreciated. And the reason for that, even with these capital improvements, the reason is these capital improvements don't match depreciation expense. Depreciation expense is four and a half million a year, which means that if you don't spend that or more each year, your system continues to age, all right? But this is what the minimum requirements are that was in the capital improvement plan, and that 3.7 million includes about 1.4 million in a chiller system to meet the state of California's discharge permits, as well as another assumption that we used in the model is $360,000 of additional operating expenses to run that chiller. All right, so these are the key assumptions, and, you know, we feel these assumptions are reasonable in building the model, but there's one thing I'm certain of, these assumptions are going to vary, and my projections are going to be wrong, because these assumptions will change. But one thing I'm always confident in is when I look out two or three years, our projections historically are quite accurate. So when you get out years four and five, they're going to vary, they're going to change. So this is the financial model, what it's showing us, if we don't do anything with rates. I first want you to look at the right-hand side, where it says debt coverage ratio. You see the 1.01, and each year it's degrading a little bit, going down to 0.93. In order, in your bond ordinance, your revenue bond ordinance, you're mandated to maintain a minimum of a 1.2 coverage. If you fall below that, you're in technical default on the debt. Not that somebody's going to come knocking on the door demanding payment, but what's going to happen is the next time you go to issue debt, your bond rating is going to suffer. If your bond rating suffers, your interest rates go up, all right? So that needs to be corrected, or like I said, we'll go into technical default. The second item, cash reserves. The minimum reserve requirement for the utility is 10.6 million. That's what's needed for the utility to pay its bills in a timely fashion. The working capital needs, the capital improvement programs that are funded through cash, the debt service payments, and a small amount for what we call catastrophic type events, because unexpected things happen, so we account for that or recognize that. And that came up to 10.6 million. You can see that in the first two years, you're actually above that, without any rate adjustments. But then we start falling into a cash burn situation. And if you extend this out, as our model goes out 20 years, in 2031, your cash falls negative. If we don't do anything with rates, between '29 and '31, we're going to need to have between a '29 and, or '25 and a 30% rate adjustment. And of course, that's going to be very difficult on customers. Plus, it's going to be difficult for us to issue any debt, because we've been historically in violation of our bond covenants. So this is what we're trying to reverse. Now, if you look at the upper boundary, it's called the optimal operating income. We don't want to exceed that. It's about three and a half to four million dollars. All right, but you can see the operating income is declining each year and continuing to get worse. So what we have is three different scenarios. The first one is kind of like biting everything, doing everything all at once, all right? Now, since the last rate increase, inflation has gone up 28%. We're looking at just to maintain our coverage, debt coverage ratio, a 16% increase. And according to the projection, we would be set till approximately 2028. With that adjustment, our projected cash balances stay above our minimum cash reserves, and we do not exceed our optimal operating income target. Of course, the downside of it, the average residential customer, I have it on an upcoming slide, I'm speaking from memory, but I believe that's about a $12, $13 a month impact on their monthly bills, all right? The second option, the second scenario. The second option, the second scenario, is to have a 14% increase, followed by very modest 1% adjustments. And that 14%, you can see that on the debt coverage ratio, which is the one I'm focusing on. You can see that the debt coverage ratio remains around 1.3. So we exceed our bond covenant, so we're in good shape with that. I believe that's like an $8 or $9 a month increase on average residential customer's bill. Like I said, I'll get to the slide and we'll confirm that. Scenario three is a 10% increase, followed by a series of 2%. Now, the problem with this scenario is you see the debt coverage ratio is at 1.22, and in the projection, we're actually meeting our bond covenants. The concern is we have no buffer with the 10%. That's kind of why we front-loaded the rate adjustment. It was to meet that bond covenant. So this is probably one of the key things that I'm looking for direction on, and I'll come back to that after I finish the rest of the presentation, unless there's any questions at this point.
Let me ask you one, yeah, just one. We had a 90-day reserve policy, so when did it get changed from the 90-day? This is going back in 2013, in the Wilhelm study, when we did this rate increase way back when. When did we change from the 90-day reserve policy to wanting 100% plus reserve policy?
I'm not following the 90 days.
This one was approved by the council.
Yeah, I realize that.
So they had a 90-day reserve policy to meet. We were going to replace 10 miles of sewer lines in Old Town. This is what they sold the people before, 10-plus years ago. And a lot of stuff didn't happen, but I'm just concerned is why all of a sudden we have 100% plus reserve policy now? I don't, I'm not sure where that happened.
If you look at the screen right now, what you see is how we determine the minimum level of cash for utility. The first item is any utility that bills monthly, there's a timing difference between when you pay a bill and get the money from customers. So for example, you go all through the month of January, paying for labor, material supplies. Let's say at the end of the month, you read all the meters, send all the bills out the first week of February. You don't get that money until the middle of March. So there's a 45-day working capital lag on the O&amp;M to cover that timing difference. Any utility that bills monthly, it's 45 days. Then you have your debt service payments. Your debt service payments occur traditionally twice a year. One is an interest-only payment, the other one is principal and interest. And we want to make sure that we have the highest debt service amount, principal or payment during the year in our cash reserves at all times. That's the debt service payments, see that 83%, I think. Then you have the capital improvement program that's funded through cash reserves. And so what we do is, because capital, even though they may budget $2 million in a year, usually that gets, doesn't get all spent in one year, make it spread over a couple of years, and then the other one comes in. So what we do is we take five years of capital, and we divide it by five. So we average out the capital expenditures over that five-year period, and that's why you see that 20%. Then there's also what we call unexpected events, something happening to the infrastructure. And we look at the age of the infrastructure, and we, one thing we're pretty certain of is that if we have an older infrastructure, we have more exposure to something unexpected occurring. If we have a newer infrastructure, we have less exposure. Your system is 50% depreciated, that's average. So to recognize that bad things happen, we take your total investment in assets, and we take 2% of it, and that comes out to about $3 million. So when you total all of these factors, it comes up to about $10.6 million that we need to maintain in reserves at all times, probably works out to be in excess of 200 days cash. So when we look at it, we look at what the utility needs to maintain their financial stability irrespective of prior policies that were necessarily written. It's what is felt needs to be maintained in cash reserves. So hopefully that helps answer that question.
Councilmember Bridge.
Could you explain the 80% again? I'm sorry, that went over my head.
Oh, the 80%? Yeah, no problem. When you make a debt service payment, like you have a revenue bond, those payments occur twice a year. One payment is what's called interest only, and then the second payment includes both principal and interest, which is the highest of the two. And so we're using the highest of the two payments that we want to keep in our reserves, which is about $4.7 million. So during one month of the year, you have a $4.7 million cash outflow for debt service payments.
So you're saying, just in layman's terms, you're saying you're taking one and a half, times the annual debt service payment and putting it in reserve?
No, no. If your debt service payment is $100, for example, what this is saying is that $20 would be interest, and $80 would be principal and interest, the highest payment. It's the $80 that we're trying to keep in reserves.
So you're keeping 80% of an annual payment in reserve
Correct.
On top of the collection that you're collecting? It's just sitting in reserve?
Well, the collections are different from the standpoint that that's working capital needs, in that you have labor, material supplies that you're paying throughout the month, and there's a 45-day lag on that. And that's what we're quantifying in that 12.3%. 12.3% is really nothing more than 45 days.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep on the 80% for a minute before you vector off on me.
That's all right.
What I'm hearing you say is you're taking 80% of the annual payment
Correct.
And putting it in the bank in case you can't make that.
Because you have to have that in reserve, so when the payment comes due, you have the money to pay it.
Okay, so I put that in reserve, I know you've probably worked these numbers ad nauseam, but you put that in reserve in year one.
Yep.
Okay, I've got that sitting in my reserve now. Why do I have to do it again next year?
You're not, because during the year, in your rates, there's what's called contribution margin that's funding cash reserves throughout the year, within the rates. And so once it's in your reserves, as long as you maintain your rates, that's going to stay in your reserves.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, but I still see year 2026 has got 80% going, and so are you just saying that's a calculation of what the reserves we have to maintain?
Yes, each year.
Okay, could you go back a slide to the, what where you had the, yes, stop right there.
Oh, okay.
Actually, go to the 16% one.
Okay.
I think that's the one I was looking at. So we have an adjusted operating income that's $1.5 million, we'll call it right now, 1.4.
Yep.
And you increase the rate by 16% and double the, a little more than double the operating income. Okay, that's a little confusing to me. If I had an operating income of $100 and I increased it by 16%, I'd have an operating income of 1.16.
It's, you see, what we're doing in this model that you're seeing up here is there's two ways of looking at it. One is what's called cash basis, all right? And like the cash reserve, the cash balances, is that methodology, just looking at cash, all right? When you look at the adjusted operating income, that's a different methodology, it's called accounting, it's cruel accounting basis. So there's depreciation expense is considered an expense, debt service payments not included in that, nor are capital expenditures. That is just a pure accounting methodology when you look at the adjusted operating income. The other ones are cash basis methodologies, so that can be what's confusing.
Those were a lot of nice words. You doubled your revenue, that's what that says, right?
Not revenue.
Is that net income or revenue?
Not revenue, it's adjusted.
Income?
It's income.
Is it net income or gross income?
In a sense, it's adjusted operating income, but in a sense, net income would be close.
Net income. So I increased my rate by 16% and doubled my net income.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
I just don't understand that.
The reason, when you increase it 16%, when you have a dollar of revenue, you're very...
You said it was a revenue.
No, let's, I'm just giving you an example. If you have a dollar of revenue, and you have what's called variable costs, which in wastewater is probably about 30 cents on a dollar, okay, it's variable cost. 70 cents on a dollar go to cover fixed costs and debt service payments and those types of things. So with a 16% increase, that's increasing that contribution margin, that's falling right to the bottom line, that's where you see the adjusted operating income going up. So instead of a dollar and 70 cents, 16% increase means your revenue now is $1.16, so the 70 cents of contribution margin goes to 86 cents. That's why you see that increase. That's probably confusing, probably more confusing.
No, I understand variable.
Yeah.
I understand variable cost and fixed cost, and what you're saying is you're increasing the rate, but you aren't increasing any cost. But, you know, obviously you're increasing...
Well, the costs are already there, but yeah.
Right, so they're not going up, so everything drops to the bottom line.
Correct, that's correct, it drops right to the bottom line, that's correct. So what we're trying to do is keep the utility financially stable. This is one of the ways with the 16%. And the second way is the 14%, but then we need some additional adjustments in future years to maintain the financial targets. And the other one, the lowest one, is a 10%, which limits the buffer, basically, because your debt coverage is only 1.2, 1.22, so you're only .02 above the limit, the baseline. So, but this is the key piece.
So the debt coverage ratio, you've been, I kind of fixed in my brain that it's 1.25 we got to be at. Is that a state-manded thing, or is that a debt covenants?
It's in your bond ordinance, the revenue bonds. So when you issue revenue bonds, those are the, you have two forms of debt right now. You have one that's a pure revenue bond that requires a 1.2 coverage. Then you also have state revolving fund debt that only requires a one-time coverage. All right, what we're targeting is the 1.2 on the revenue bonds, all right? And like I said, we don't want to fall below that, or we could fall into technical default on the debt.
So I'm just going to repeat what I heard, because I'm not too sure you said it, but as we increase our revenue, our bond requires us to increase our reserve?
No.
You said it was 1.2 times the revenue.
No, it's not 1.2 times the revenue, what it is is a little more complex than that. When you look at debt coverage, the way it's calculated, the easiest way I know of to do the calculation is you take the net income of the utility, add back non-cash expenditures like depreciation, and you add back your interest expense, and that total is then divided by your debt service payment, and that has to exceed 1.2.
So that calculation is not shown in any of these?
What's that?
Is calculation shown in any document that we've seen?
Yeah, let me show you. Right here. So if you look at this, you got the net income that's projected, this is without any rate adjustments. Net income's projected at 424. You add back depreciation, you add interest expense, that's cash generated from operations is 5.9 million. The principal and interest payments on debt's about 5.9 million, so it's a one-time coverage. Question, there's different ways of doing the calculation, but...
The 1.4 is the minimum debt ratio coverage on this?
Yeah, we prefer that when we set rates for utilities, we normally target a minimum of 1.4. But for us to do that here, it would mean a bigger increase, and...
And I thought you said it was a debt covenant. Now you're saying you get to play with it as a charge.
Okay, I know where you're going with this. Okay, if you target a 1.2 coverage to set rates, when it comes to utility services, sales fluctuate up and down on an annual basis, and expenses, you have unexpected expenses and things like that. So if you targeted 1.2, chances are 50% of the time you'd fail coverage, because sales are not going to come in exactly as projected, expenses are not going to be exactly as projected. So the 1.4 represents what we call a safety factor to ensure that we don't fail coverage, because like I said, that can be, that can lead to higher rates in the future, an interest expense, which means higher rates for your customers, so...
Okay, I have one last question.
No, no problem.
Going into your growth curves or your growth chart, you said we were going to have zero growth.
We did, and that is somewhat conservative, I realize that.
Well, we know we've got, I'm sure Dean or Christie has the memorized number of houses that are coming in in the next two years.
Yeah, I don't know if it's enough to really affect the projection that much. The, and, yeah, basically, I don't think it's enough to really change the numbers or the recommendations, unless there was, you know, a 5% growth rate or something.
Okay, I guess it wasn't my last, I got one more Well, you know what, you're probably better at the Village, and I'll leave that one to you.
The anticipated in that timeframe there could be 15 to 20% growth in the town, that's kind of what we're looking at, is a mandate level like that, so it's significant. But I guess one of my questions is, in the annual financial report by the city, we do have a scheduled revenue bond coverage for the wastewater utility. How is that page so much different than what you're presenting here?
Because I'm using the entire debt, not just the revenue bond debt.
The entire debt of where?
Of the debt service payment. So when you look at this slide...
I'm looking at revenues aren't aligning with revenues that are in the book.
What's that?
Your revenues aren't aligning with revenues in the book and such, or your expenses aren't either. So I'm not sure where you're getting all your numbers from, they don't seem to be aligning. Because we have a city system coverage of, according in 2024, 5.4 in here, in his book.
Yeah, what that is in that book is it's only using the revenue bond payment, it's not using the state revolving fund payment. So it's only, part of the debt is included in that schedule, not the entire debt.
Okay, so how much is the state revolving fund debt?
I'd have to go back and look, I don't know exactly.
So, because what I'm trying to do is go back So because what I'm trying to do is go back historically, what we were told the debt was and why the we raised the rates 10 years ago, right? We had to set a policy at that time because any more than cost of service, we had to have a policy established in what we were raising it to. So that's where we had a 90-day policy. Now you're telling me we need a a 100% policy, but we have not created that policy up here.
Mm-hmm.
So we're charging more than cost of service because you have 100% in reserve.
Um, well, no, you're you're not exceeding overcharging customers until you get above that target operating income number.
Of of putting $12 million cash in the bank when we reach when we achieve that?
Well, cash looking so like cash, um, this is what happens when you try to keep cash at a minimum. The your system gets older and um, you have to replace that infrastructure. At some point, you need to replace it. And if you if you just look at cash and try to keep it at the minimum, that means that at some point in the future, you're going to have to replace that infrastructure and you're not going to have any cash reserves to do it. As as a consequence of that, you have to go out and issue debt and finance almost the entire amount of debt, which is going to increase your debt covered ratio requirements. Your so the the cash is you you want to maintain cash to protect your customers from large rate adjustments because the more cash you have, the more buffer you have.
And so what I'm getting at is when you do more than cost of service, you're doing a tax. And what you're doing here is you're showing me that you want us to put a tax aside so you have money sitting in the coffers for future use. Because if you if you're saving money for a future plant, that's cost of future service. That's caught not cost of current service.
Um, this is the way we look at it is that when you have infrastructure, um, in service, providing service to customers, when customers use it, they're using and consuming that infrastructure and the rate should recover that their wear and tear on that lines or pipe or whatever. And that includes depreciation expense. It also includes the eventual replacement cost of that infrastructure. And so that's where the optimal operating income comes in. So that million-dollar asset, when you go to replace it, isn't just a million dollars you need to fund. It's also the inflation on that. So you need like one and a half million in 20 years to replace that infrastructure that was consumed by customers during that 20-year period.
That again, you you would be charging the current customer customer for future use that they're no longer here.
We're charging.
I get your depreciation and and carrying it forward. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But if you so what would the future people be paying for if the past people already paid for a new plant?
They would be paying for their wear and tear on the infrastructure. What we're trying to prevent is what's called generational subsidies. What generational subsidies are is when you have when when the current rate payers don't fund fully fund the replacement infrastructure, that's going to be left for the future generations to pay. So what we're trying to do is to and there's always a balance. I mean, that's why we have these ranges. But there's always a balance between um, try trying to fund the complete replacement um, and some of it is still it most likely going to be left for the future generation. It's hard to fund it entirely. And the reason is because when you look at like water or wastewater utilities, you build a plant and spend $50 million. And if you funded depreciation expense and the inflationary replacement in 30 years on that plant and you you're probably not going to spend a lot on capital on on a new plant for years. So what's going to happen is your cash reserves are going to start to go up. And if they get too high, even though it's justifiable, from a public's perception, it's hard for them always to understand the need for that much cash. So that's why there's these limitations. That's why there's these ranges that we establish because we don't want to see your cash reserves go up to $50 million, even though it is justified, maybe justified, I mean, because that would be perceived by the public as being too much.
I think that's what I'm getting at. Our reserve policy is 90 days. It's not 360 days.
Yeah, I don't.
A violation of your reserve policy right now.
No, it's not a violation. It's uh.
This is Brad. The SRF loan financing also includes a cash reserve requirement of one year's um, payment. So we have to also include in our cash reserves about $4.5 million of cash in addition to the O and M reserve that you're talking about, which is the 90-day reserve. So there's already existing cash requirements on both our SRF debt and our 2018 refunding debt.
Of which how much is the the village and the the base putting aside on that?
Well, it's one year, so between the three of us, we've funded the the 4.5 million in the city in cash, so.
So that's already that's in this $12.8 million right here right now?
Correct.
Okay, so that so I get how much is the base and the are they they're paying their how much do they have in that in the reserve?
Well, once it's paid to us, it's our money. So they've paid us their obligation based on their their capacity in the plant. So they've already paid that and we've already paid it too. We just had to capture it.
Take as much as you can.
Up until 4.5 million and then we don't need to add to it again. Basically, what they're doing is they're making sure we have the last year payment.
Yeah, if something happens, you got to that, but that's not what we're totally referencing here. You want an operational cash so that you can end up having 100%. That that shouldn't even put part of the equation that you have in there because it's already out there. It's already it's already in your lockbox. I think as you guys bet said 10 years ago that it was in a lockbox. The um.
While he's thinking about that, I just want to go back to the statement that was said, I I just would like to understand. Um, I was operating under kind of what Jim was saying, the assumption that current users don't pay for future um, infrastructure.
Correct.
And you you maintained or kind of pointed to that, well, we're consuming that present infrastructure.
Yeah.
Um, and so they should pay for that, the current user.
Correct.
Well, what happened to the debt they're servicing? Aren't they paying for the current? They're paying.
Yeah.
Every every year, they're paying debt to pay for that infrastructure they purchased.
Yeah.
And they're using.
Yeah.
And now you're saying in addition to paying for the existing, now they have to put aside money for the future.
Yeah.
So I get all.
No, I I I get what you're what you're saying, but this is what um, see the optimal operating income and the adjusted operating income? That's on on your accounting statement. So if you look at your financials, you'll see something similar to that. And what you see is operating expenses and you see depreciation expense going into it. What's not in there is debt service payments. So or capital expenditures. Um, so that number is does not include the debt service or the capital because those are cat.
The net income has not included the debt servicing?
Uh, correct.
Because it's on the balance sheet, not in the.
It's on the balance sheet, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, if if you look further on your income statement, you'll see interest expense, but the principal payments never show up. And this is operating income, so it's above the non-operating revenues and expenses. I'm getting into accounting lingo, so.
Well, it's obvious. It's painful to us to go increase rates.
Oh, absolutely.
And so.
Absolutely.
I don't know about the rest of the guys up here, but I have to really feel comfortable that.
Yeah.
We have looked at every element of what's going on and I, from a philosophy standpoint, I hate the idea of getting in this situation where we have to bump 20%. I don't understand why we don't aren't able to run the calculations out and put in 3% inflation a year than instead of we hit the systems. I just don't get that.
No, actually, you're doing what what you need to do and and that's grimy. Absolutely. I want to tell you what my role is. My role is not to tell you what to do. That's my role is to help guide you and to tell you the good and the bad of what you're considering. That's my role. And um, to tell you the impacts, like this slide. For example, if you choose the 16%, that means the average residential customer's bill will increase by $10.39 a month. If you choose the 14%, this is the one-year adjustment, it would be about a little over $9. If you choose a 10%, it'd be $6.50. This is the first year increase only I'm referring to. Um, and to give it in perspective as to what you're what you're um, looking at as far as the impacts on customers and um, you know, what we're trying to do is to make sure because the the most important thing is that we can provide reliable service. And of course, we don't want to get and with wastewater, it's a little bit different than water or electric in that if we don't do something right, then we're going to violate our permit, then we're going to get fined. Uh, could be health consequences.
I don't think any of us want to not provide rely. I don't think any of us want to not provide reliable service.
Exactly, exactly.
So you accumulated, you talked about a chiller. We got this page here, which looks like capital improvement cost to me.
Yeah.
I don't see the chiller on here.
It isn't. It was added after.
And it seems like you've incorporated it as I would if I was you, some level of capital improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Does the capital improvement that's in here address what seems to be the underlying driving, hey, we've got to meet state requirements? I'm not saying this very elegantly, but we've got total boron and chrome and temperature that we've got to go address, but I don't see that in this list. And so how are you in your study, how are you addressing?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. I'm a what's first of all, on the capital, the capital itself expenditures is not what's driving the recommendations, although the chiller is. And the chiller is not because of the capital cost as much as it is because of $360,000 a year of operating expenses. What's driving with the primary driver of my recommendations, it really relates to the debt coverage ratios right here. Um, I mean, obviously, I want cash. I'd like to see cash above that 10 million, but the immediate concern is the debt coverage.
Well, I understand the debt coverage. What I'm not understanding, it feels like we have a rate structure with no plan. That's how we're going to meet the things that we talked about in here. Um, and and maybe my question is to Dean, has this gone to the utility commission, the the group that's supposed to analyze this and bring a plan and?
No, that that's not.
So are we going to, we're going to get all done with this? We're going to do a rate? We're going to say 10% and 3% a year or whatever. Um, are you going to come back in three months and say, well, you know, the state said we have to do all this other stuff and now I need another $2 million or I'm just throwing numbers. I don't have.
No, no. What's in the capital plan, I think that's what you're looking at, that's included in our plan.
No, I don't see any of that in this.
I isn't that the cap?
So the reason the chiller is not on the capital plan is the capital plan was developed as part of the 2325 budget and the time service order from the water board came out after that.
Yeah, I'm not saying anybody's not has done anything wrong. I'm just saying.
No, I'm saying is the reason it's not on that list is because the list predates the requirement by the water board to put it in. What we've done in that meantime is analyze and evaluate what it would cost to put a chiller in. And we've also followed the TSO's requirements to look at the boron sulfate and chromium and have given the water board sufficient evidence that we don't that we already meet those qualifications. So we didn't have to put any capital recommendations in for those three new constituents that has to be applied for. So we've already addressed the the constituents issue. It's just the temperature that is still something that is still part of the requirement and we.
So you gotta you gotta go buy a million-dollar chiller or whatever it was and you've taken the operating cost of that chiller.
Correct.
But you haven't shake taken the cost of the chiller itself. Is that what I heard? That that it's because it was before or?
So it's it's part of the evaluation because we just added it that list because it was not part of the list. So the capital that's included in the CIP for 2325 is in the study as well as a 1.3 for the chiller. The two of those combined are part of the study to make sure that we have that paid for with cash and still meeting our debt service requirements. Um, effectively, that's that's the so.
So what you said, what I heard is the cost of the chiller, which is the only real component needed to meet the state requirements and the operating cost of the chiller are in this in this rate study that we're looking at.
Yes.
You just said the cost of chiller wasn't in there.
No, it it is in there. No, I said, um, what I was referring to when I said that is what's driving the rate adjustments and it's not really the capital plan that's driving it. It's the debt coverage ratios.
The study's not sensitive to capital. We can go do all of this and the rates are not going to change.
Um, probably not. If it went up, it would.
Pardon?
If it increased, it would. If the capital expenditures increased, it would affect it.
What are these in there?
Yes, they're all in there.
Yes, okay.
See, the the just to give you in perspective, um, the debt covered ratio is what's driving most of our recommendations. Capital expenditures, believe it or not, does not affect the debt covered ratio calculation. I know that sounds unusual, but it doesn't affect it. Because that's only an operating.
Well, I I understand the difference between the balance sheet and the profit and loss.
Correct, yeah.
But somehow we got to account for the cash.
Correct.
So if we're going to go spend the money.
Yeah.
And we haven't accounted for where we're going to spend it.
Yeah.
It's going to hit the rates. One way or another, it's going to hit the rates.
Over time, it will, yes.
Let me get Councilmember Ball.
So this is the second time I've heard you present on some rates and you the first time you spoke, you reminded us that it's not, I think I'll quote you tonight, it wasn't an exact science.
That's how it was.
It's not an exact science.
Correct.
You're trying, you're trying to to thread a thread a needle. So I I'm I think these are all very valid points. I'd love a lot more clarity. I think if in my world, I just wish there was a a, you know, just that every year there was just a predictable increase, no one stressed too much about. We didn't leave stuff hanging for 10 years and have to argue about a big increase or not. But I think everyone's got some valid points. I want to go back to what I understood is and it's not, we're not even talking about this much, but as I understand it, we have to do some upgrades to the treatment plant because we have overages in some measurements of boron, sulfate and some of those things. Is that what I understand?
I I think you want to address that.
No, no.
No?
It's not overages. The new permit that was issued in 2022 added those three constituents to our permit to alleviate the effluent going out into Miguelito Creek. What we were able to do through um, calculate through uh, the results given to us by water is what we call a intake credit. So we are pulling out of the ground and processing water that has those three constituent, well, two of them, chromium, six. constituents, well, two of them. Chromium 6 doesn't, doesn't meet, Chromium 6 does not exceed any levels right now. But for boron and sulfate, what we looked at is the native water that we're putting into the wastewater plant has a certain amount of boron and sulfates. We can take that off from our permit and by doing that, we meet the new requirements of the Water Board's permit from 2022. So we're already meeting those requirements by taking the credit for what's already in the water.
So I think I understand that. I guess where I'm coming from is, it sounds like we're getting an exception, so.
It's not an exception. It's, it's a...
But we now qualify where...
We, we, we meet the state mandates for the discharge because we're discharging less than our permit requirement when you take into account that the native water has some of that in, in there to start with.
So I'm just curious. Did we, did we do any analysis of when we were worried about this, I should say? Where any of these overages boron, or was that coming just from us? Is that an organic happening here? Does this happen in other places?
I don't know what the Water Board thought, but they added these constituents to our permit in 2022. We, we were not required to measure or mitigate them before that.
Okay. So, one other question. We talked about the exact science. There's numbers between 16 and 18% in different, different methods. Now, I think the, one of the moving targets is that if we decide to wait on certain capital improvement projects versus do them sooner, we're dealing with inflation hits us if we wait too long and the cost goes up, but we may not have the cash right now. So I always get that that's a, that's a, that's a moving target there. I guess it's interesting. I'd love for to hear your opinion on that. I understand that cost of service should be related to the service that you offer now and you shouldn't necessarily be charging for something that you have to supply in the future. So I get that, but the thing I misunderstand is that in theory, that would throw any capital improvement project out the window, right? In theory, because you're, you're collecting money for something that you're not having to pay for yet that needs to be improved down the road. So maybe, what am I misunderstanding about?
I know, it's, well...
I'm a layman here, so forgive me.
Let me try a different way of explaining it. There's two ways of looking at cost. One is cash basis, okay? When you buy a car, you may borrow the money and then you have your debt service payment. And your payment to pay it back and your operating expenses and you're trying to fund it, but then your, your car needs to be replaced and you got to start the process over again. With, that's one way of looking at it. But when you go to buy that new car, what's going to happen is your rates, your costs are going to go up quite a bit. The other way of looking at it is the way accountants will look at it, which means, okay, you buy a car, you finance it through debt, and yeah, you got that cash payment out. But every month, we're going to, we are going to expense depreciation. Depreciation is going to go into a fund. Some of that fund is going to go to pay debt service. But it, it means that it's consistent every single that, that amount, that's assuming you got enough cash to start with, of course. And so the depreciation's going to go into that fund. But then you go to replace that car and of course, costs go up. So in order to fund consistently from every user of the, every person that used that car over the course of its life, you not only have to fund depreciation, but you have to fund the eventual replacement of the car. So, so that when you go to replace it, you can start the process over again. So everybody pays their fair share of that vehicle. So, and that's the way accountants look at it. But cash is king. That's the reason why we look at cash, because we still have to have cash to, but that is more as of a buffer, not a necessarily direct relationship to rates unless we start falling below those minimums. Okay? Does that help clarify it? It's two different ways of looking at it. Neither way is 100% right. That's why we incorporate the two together.
And the reason I kind of brought this up in general is because from my understanding, we're way behind across many different departments in terms of capital improvement. We're way behind. So by definition, because we're behind, the cost has probably gone up and been inflated. And again, we may not have had the ability, the resources, the money to affect or update the thing in an expedient manner when it needed to happen. So my fear is, again, that trying to understand how does this work? Is this enough? Is this, I don't want to be the bad guy here and say, well, but if we say, let's do the bare minimum and let's kick the can down on some improvement projects for another five years, the price on those things go through the roof. We're right back here again, having this discussion of, well, we got to go extra high because the costs are so much higher. So again, I, I'm sensitive to like...
Well, I'm just not sure. So, this is the wastewater treatment? Does this include the piping?
It includes all of it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If I could have responded to that.
They didn't. They gave up.
Was piping on this capital improvement?
Let me, it's deep in, but never happened. We, we had proved stuff for capital improvement plans a long time ago, didn't get done. We, we were sold stuff 10 years ago that didn't get done. We had 10 miles in the city that was going to break. We had to get it done. Didn't get it done. And we, we raised the rates way through the roof 10 years ago, anticipating all this. But I'll tell you some of the things that did get done. There was an enterprise reimbursement tax that they implemented. They want to call it an allocation now. I've been asking for months on how much it is. It's well over $1 million coming out of wastewater alone. So we did raise the rates and that did happen. Okay? So there's a lot of other things that happen that we don't get to see. And I've been asking for numbers for months now that I haven't been able to get. Aging on the AR. The AR right now is $3.8 million. What is the aging on that AR for wastewater alone? You have $16 million, according to this book, in outstanding AR debt. So we have $3.8 million in wastewater. What is the debt on that? If we're raising rates to cover because we're not collecting money, you're subsidizing other people's rates. You can't do that. It's important for us to see and know those numbers. We don't really get it all. Our cash statements are eight months out. I don't know if you noticed that, but we haven't had a cash statement in eight months. Wasn't going to bring it up. It's been eight months. So that means the checkbook hasn't been balanced and provided to us for eight months. So they're asking us to raise numbers predicated on some pretty, pretty charts up here. But if we're not able to collect the money, and if you're showing this ratio based on, on what? Are we billing it out? Do you have a chart that shows us what we build out and what we didn't collect? And if we're getting to a point where it's no longer sustainable to raise rates, it might sound like only $10 a month per family, but when you're raising it to the whole community, when you go buy groceries, that's part of the inflationary component at groceries, the people will pay this $2 to $3 million a year more. It'll come out of everybody's pockets. And those people on fixed incomes are the people going to get hit hardest. And they, they see, it sounds like, you know, $100 a year more, but it's going to be more like $200 a year more. It'd be compounded. Because the little grocery store that has the rate increase, et cetera, et cetera, down there, will compound it on the way down. Because he's going to try to balance it out to get, keep his head above water. And that's what we have to be mindful of when we do something like this. There's nobody else out running out here with 100% reserves in their, in their, their portfolio. Nobody's paying for depreciation on their house that they're trying to make the payment on to pay for the first time around. They're not putting in another chunk of money to put something there, but they're definitely not coming up at the last minute like we have here, when we're told we have a TSO in front of us with threats of $10,000 a day fines, that it turns out that we, we don't have to meet these numbers. It, it turns out that Chromium 6 isn't an issue for us, nor the boron, but we were led to believe that it was. We had a panic order put in front of us that we had a time constraint on us because we're missing the TSO. In fact, if you go in here on E, you'll see here about what the utility director was trying to say, E here, on the TSO says, "If effluent concentration of boron, sulfate, and chromium 6 are still above final limits after applying intake water credits and implementing PPP, develop and submit a feasibility plan." So it appears that we actually met those requirements. Is that correct?
Since that TSO went out, we've had to report quarterly to the Water Board and we've reported to the Water Board our progress towards showing them compliance with these rules. So that, one of the requirements of that was to do the rate study and they worked in parallel. So when we were doing the rate study, we had already gotten confirmation from the Water Board that the intake credits were accepted by them so that we wouldn't not have, we, we meet the requirements. So the, the time service order is just telling us, these are the steps we need to take to meet the permit requirements that we gave to you in 2022. There was nothing, and it also requires all that to be done by 2027. So there's no issues until 2027.
So F, my, my concern is F. It says, "Secure project funding for facility improvements to 125." That's no longer needed. Because that was actually supposed to have done February 1st, but that one's not needed to be done?
I don't have it in front of me, so...
On page six, in the TSO order, F.
So if, it follows from task E, and task E is talking about the, determine what the, if you are not able to meet the intake credits, you need to determine what type of improvements you need to make to do, to be able to meet those limits. But by showing the Water Board that we've met those affluent credits and met our effluent requirements, F's not required for that particular item. So it's not talking about the, the chiller, that's in a separate section.
Right. So I just want to make sure we had that because that is the TSO that was hanging on us with a potential $10,000 a day fine. So that, that was given to us. It wasn't told that it wasn't E. We just, but for the record, you're saying that we're...
Well, I'm just reading what it says in the compliance due date. It says for task E, so.
Right. So, so that's not a project.
So what is the timing here? Because I was operating under the assumption, based on reading this, that we had like 30 days to make a decision. What is the real timeline, Dean? Do we know what the, I mean, can we take this back and absorb all the stuff we've just been told? Or are we really on a deadline?
I don't have that expertise. I'm not sure.
So...
There's a voice reason.
Hi there. The, the timing is that the longer we wait, the more impact we have with not collecting the rates that are being recommended. However, we have, we don't have the time constraints on the TSO is not immediate. We have until the 2027 to be able to adjust the rates to meet those requirements.
It's a financial issue. You have a chart, you have a do-nothing chart up there before, right?
That's the one.
Correct.
That one?
So, we're at one right now. We don't change for all of 2025 is what that says. And perhaps that's not doing fiduciary responsibility, but we're through 2025. If we don't do anything, we're nowhere off than we are today. That's what I'm hearing.
Correct.
So, my recommendation was, this was a lot of information for me to absorb. I'll be honest. And I, and I still don't feel comfortable on the capital.
A public comment.
Okay, but I can talk, right?
Yes, yes.
So I, I just still don't feel comfortable on the capital improvement that I understand it. I'm not saying it's incorrect. I'm saying I don't understand.
We, we haven't been given anything on the capital improvement other than verbal tonight.
Well, but I wasn't, I'm not criticizing here. I just don't understand.
I'm not either. I'm just saying, the only project we have here just finally came to us tonight.
So, public comment, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Can I throw it out?
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ball.
Sorry. And with all respect, look, I, look, I know that you've buried your head in countless binders here and, and compared and contrasted numbers. I have a lot of respect for that. Only thing I want to reference, and just take it back, that it's sometimes, I, I hope we do take some time. I hope we get more clarity. I hope we get the cash statement. I hope we get transparency and all of that stuff. But there are cases and there are times where council can be so sure of themselves and not make an action on something and it does come back to bite them. And I'm not saying, putting that personal on anyone here. But I was sitting here when the electric rates were thrown in our lap and we got to deal with this. And we have to put our head in our hands and we're the ones tasked with raising the rates on our community that no one wants to do. Every $10 affects me too. That's 10 more bucks. I, I get that. But I do remember that we were behind on our electric rates. We had a lot of capital stuff that we were falling behind on, retention issues with staffing. The utility commission, not us, the utility commission came to this council and suggested, after they had analyzed it, that we raised the rates 50% on electric rates. They might have been wrong. The data might have been wrong, but the utility commission suggested that. Now, that's ridiculous. But if we go and analyze, the only reason they were ever recommending that is because the cost had spiraled out of control and we hadn't sustained a little bit of effort incrementally over time. So I'm not trying to win an argument here. I'm just saying that there are cases where we were so sure that something was going to pan out and neither we got the bad information, whoever got it wrong. We were stuck here having to make an awkward adjustment to rates that maybe if we'd have done it differently in the past, it could have been a little bit smoother and softer and less harmful to our citizens. I'm not saying I have the perfect answer. I'd love to make an educated decision on this, but we should take some time and make sure that we have all the information. And yeah, utility commission, yeah, they haven't been busy lately. Let's put them to work on this one. See what they come up with. Do we have to trust their decision or their suggestion? No. But I'm open to listening to what they have to say.
I think we're in violent agreement there.
I gotta say, the questions...
There's something else to add before we go to public comment?
I, I do. I just want to say the questions are really good and I appreciate you asking those. I just want to, just to mention one thing. If my projections are correct and we don't do anything, then what you're saying may, could happen in this situation. Because we are projecting between 25 and 30% increase to be needed around 29 to 30 if we don't do anything today. The other thing to think about, and I know that it's not going to work right now for wastewater, but from a customer's perspective, and this is my experience in doing this for years, 30 years, is when utilities have small periodic rate adjustments, say less than 5% a year, customers tend to view them as inflationary type rate adjustments. This is going to sound funny, but it tends to be true. You get very little backlash from anybody except for the two people that show up at every council meeting complaining about everything, you know, in a sense. And increases between 5 and 10%. They tend to be okay with residential, but maybe not so much with industrial. But you always try to avoid double-digit increases. And of course, that's what we're having to do now. Because yes, it probably should have been done subsequent years, moving forward. But that's, those big jumps occur when you only look at cash. That's why we establish the parameters so that we can identify how to adjust rates slowly over time to minimize rate impacts on customers. It's all about the customers.
Were you, were you going to discuss the meters? Was that yours?
Oh, yes. I apologize. One of the things, if you go to this slide, when you have a meter, and of course, it's a, it's a water meter. So the water meter department installed it, but the waste order department still has to share part of the cost of billing, part of the cost of maintaining the service drop, and aligns in front of the facilities of the customers. Those are fixed costs that don't vary based on consumption. And most utilities charge some form of a fixed charge to recover those fixed costs to try to prevent cross-subsidization. Now, you've used a strategy which does mitigate it to some degree in that you have a minimum bill. Now, I'm talking purely from a cost of service perspective that the fixed customer charge should be approximately theoretically $10. And, you know, and not that necessarily would replace the minimum bill. We'd still keep the minimum bill. But one of the things council could consider is starting or implementing a small customer charge, fixed charge, in every monthly bill. a small customer charge, fixed charge, in every monthly bill. Of course, that is part of the increase, 16, 14, 10, whatever it is, that's part of the revenue increase. So that means that the volumetric charge would be less impacted by having a fixed customer charge. And from a cost of service perspective, it is more cost-based. So that's, the other piece I was hoping to get direction on, is if you would be open to having a fixed charge, I think we implemented that with electric, if you'd be open to implementing it with wastewater. It's not as impactful in wastewater as is like electric, from a revenue standpoint, but it's still something that if you give me that direction to include it, we'll include it in the rate design, if you tell me you don't want to see it, we won't. But that means the volumetric charge would have to go up that much more, so.
If I can add on to that a second, one other change we would like to make in this is going to, away from the four-year averaging, and just using the prior winter averaging. With that, it, a fixed cost and a lower variable cost will help reduce the volatility from year to year, for the customers and for us. So, that's the other reason we're looking at doing a, a fixed charge, and, and not as significant of a variable charge.
I get very confused when you say that a fixed charge reduces the volatility. That imply, when I hear that, what I'm hearing you say is, we're gonna get all those people who are not using anything to pay for the treatment. That's what I hear. Is that what's really happening there?
No, what it is, is if a customer, if there's a dry winter, and they use a lot of water, January, February, March, in the past, we would, it would, it wouldn't be a significant change, because we have four-year, six-year average. But now, they're gonna see that entire increase in one year, and if it's entirely a variable bill, they'll see that entire increase.
How does the fixed part, I understand the four-year, cause I've had a lot of people complaining about the four-year. So I think the four-year to one-year is great, because what happens is people say, well, I tried to make and save, but I couldn't, nothing changed, and it's, well, it's cause it's averaged over four years. But how does the fixed rate stabilize or reduce volatility, unless it makes people pay that are not using it?
If the city's, if the part of the city's revenue is on a fixed side, then it is less dependent on the variable rate. So the variable rate doesn't have to be as high.
That, that doesn't change volatility, what you just said. You've just moved, you've taken something and divided it in A and to B, and you said, okay, well, the fixed rate will make this not be quite so high, cause I'm paying it over here. But volatility's gotta be when both of those are together. And for that to get reduced, then somehow you're saying you're collecting money that you weren't collecting before, or it wouldn't be, it just would keep going up. So it must be going down, that's the volatility. And the only way you're stopping the volatility is making people pay for something they're not getting.
It's.
I'll take that offline, I don't get that.
It's a fixed, it's a fixed charge, that's what he's getting at.
Yeah, but whether you use it or not, it's a fixed charge.
That's right.
And that's how you stabilize it.
Not volatile for them.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I could maybe give you some explanation on that. You, you know, in Lumpoke, you, you have a more of a, what I call a stable community, not a lot of seasonality, but there's some. I'm from Michigan, I think it's the best state to live in for three months, I think you heard me say that. But, a year, but there's, and the winters are brutal. So we have probably 15 to 20% of our population that goes someplace warmer in the winter. Well, when we have a meter installed on their facility, we had the cost, we had the cost to install it, with the responsibility to repair it, replace it, read it, to bill the meter every month, the cost of the service drop, and we still have to maintain the mains in front of the home. Those are fixed costs that don't vary based on consumption, have no bearing on, on variable usage. It is fixed cost. For the, for us to maintain that service, we have to incur those costs. So if we don't charge a fixed charge in Michigan, where it's more pronounced, then the year-round ratepayers, the ones that are there all year, have to subsidize seasonal customers. So it becomes a fairness issue.
I don't agree with that. I've heard that in the electrical argument, it's the same argument you made there.
Yep.
I don't agree with that, you charge a service charge to install it, all the meters are going to electric grid, and my meter has not been replaced in 30 years, so all you're doing, the way you're stabilizing, is you're making people pay when they're not using it. That's what's happening, and I just, I, I don't like it, I can have an opinion, and I respect your opinion, but.
All right, let me open up the public comment. Anybody here for a public comment?
It's the one guy that always complains no matter what. Nick Gonzalez, resident Lumpoke. So, one of the big things that disturbs me is the account receivables. I think the biggest thing you could do is you can hire almost a full-time attorney to collect, and the return on that collection, if all you did is go after people and, and put liens and, and, and small claims to get back, but to simply write off millions of dollars and make the entire other community members pay for that, is not acceptable. That's a huge one. The other one is the fact that there's nothing about how much is being transferred under the enterprise reimbursement to the general fund. That's huge. And we're getting to the point now, let's just be realistic here, that the general fund is tapped out with just police and fire, and there's not much left after that, and without these fancy full accounting methodologies, you're not able to fund the rest of the government. So what is that real amount that we're transferring, over, under the enterprise reimbursement fund, back to the general fund, under the guise of, of a reimbursement for services? And I've never once seen, I, I know that each utility is taking out and having this enterprise pulled out and put to the general fund, and it's X for the city manager, X for this, X for, all these little percent, where's that cumulative total, so that I know that we haven't paid for a city manager two times, or three times, or four times, under this accounting methodology? And, and then, and then lastly, you know, you stood up here during the electrical rates, and, and you said it was gonna be X amount, and Councilman Ball commented on what we were faced with, well, you gave a 27% equity adjustment, whatever reason it was justified to do it, and you didn't expect that you were gonna have to come back and have a very significant increase in rates as the results of doing that? Because not only did you give the salary, but that also had to do almost on an 80 cents to a dollar with the benefits. And then you have equivalencies, and you're told you, and it just, it, it rolls through, and then all that rolls back in to have to put more money from the enterprise reimbursement into the general fund. So i- it's not rocket science, it's accounting, but it's, I mean, maybe because I have a background in accounting, it's, it's simple, and I got a background in financing. But, you know, sometimes it's very, very simple things, like the accounts receivables or the transfers out, that you start to look at and see, well, this is really the methodology behind why we necessitated all the other increases that are coming through, and how do we balance that out a little bit more carefully? And, and I would agree, I, I don't like, I mean, I, I think we should pay everybody fairly, but we, we have to stop this 20 something percent, 15%. I was told that I had a 15% increase on, on, on trash. It turned out to be 300%, and I still haven't found the why.
Else? Close public comment. I think in light of, of a lot of stuff that we learned tonight, I think we finally heard that there's a project, but we still don't have the project in front of us. We don't know what it is, we've heard some costs, but I still think that that should have been part for the record, especially for everybody else on the record. I think it's a relief seeing that the TSO is under control. I'm assuming, I don't see any, is that yes? No?
That's what he said.
Part, part of it is, but the, we have two, two aspects to the TSO, is my understanding, and, and Brad can clarify on that, but we've got the, the effluent issue with the boron and, I'm, I'm not a wastewater chemical person, I'm a math person. But then the second thing is the, the temperature, and that one we still have to address. And so, in that TSO, there were those two additional aspects, one we've, we're, we're okay on, but the other one we still need to address.
There's also concern about salts, too. We had salts, boron, hex chrome, TDS, temperature, but we didn't even see any project, we were doing something, we had about four things going on here. One, are we gonna get fined by the TSO? That's my question.
If we don't address the, the chiller issue by 2027, there is the possibility of us getting fined.
All right, and I'm not saying not address that, I mean, there could be other mechanisms, there could be even shading the structure out there. There could be a lot of variables out there, we don't, we don't really know, we haven't even seen that project, so. What I'm getting at is I want to make sure that we aren't putting the city at jeopardy by deferring this, by several months. Are we gonna be putting the city at jeopardy?
I'm gonna defer to Brad, to address the timing as far as the.
Part of the reason why the, there's not a, 100% design on how to get the water temperature down, is because part of what we have to do is evaluate the options. Our wastewater manager has seen this requirement in other facilities, using, and the remedy they have for that is using a chiller to reduce the temperature of a portion of the effluent, so that the whole amount of the effluent is underneath the limits that have been imposed on that particular agency. So we've seen this in other agencies where this requirement has been imposed. So we looked at what they did, what they used, to come up with a conceptual plan of how to address it. It's not, it's not something we have to have planned or ready to go right now. What the TSO required us to do is say, you need to be able to show us that you can raise enough capital, enough cash, to implement this fix. So we're using NASA as a proxy for what we might be, be doing.
We don't know what the project is, we don't know how much it's gonna cost.
We know what a project is, and we know how much roughly it would cost to do that, because it's a unit that's about $1 million, installed about 1.3.
So we know a project, but you know the project. You're not sure of the project yet, is that what I'm getting? We have, we haven't been presented that, so, I guess that's the complication here, we're not presented a project, but we're supposed to pass rates, and we don't know what, what's going on. So, could you come back in six months with a project? And we can see? I don't feel, I mean, I don't feel comfortable in raising rates on something we have no idea what we're buying.
So, the other piece to this, and, is in addition to the TSO, we have the debt, the debt coverage right now, regardless of whether we have to do a chiller or any other projects. As we stand right now, the debt coverage ratio is diminishing over the next year to two years, if we do nothing with the rates.
Well, so it's gonna go down 110,000 from 2024 to 2025? So it looks like we're covered through 2025?
So 2025, just to put it in context, in, in terms of fiscal year, ends in three months, so.
So, I guess my question is, could we come back in six months with a project? You want to come back in 90 days with a project?
I think that we can add in the project information, an option would be to bring that when we do our budget presentation for our CIP projects. I would imagine that that's gonna be one of the projects that wastewater would be bringing forward anyway.
Well, not to interrupt, but, just to put a little clarity in, what I'm hearing, kind of, is the project's in there, in Brad's opinion, I think, not to put words in your mouth, but he has a solution, we may be able to do better, but it doesn't have to be any worse, from a cost standpoint, to deal with the, the chilled water issue. We can spend 1.2 million and $300,000 a year, and the chiller problem, now, what, what was the cost of the chiller?
About 1.2, 1.3, so you're in the ballpark.
What was the 20 million dollar you mentioned? You'd seen it somewhere?
I don't think I said 20 million.
You're 1.2 million on.
Yeah, and he's saying that that'll solve the problem. It may not be the right way to solve the problem, and maybe when we study it, he'll find a better way. But it's a way, and that's in the study. Now, I have other questions, you have other questions, but I think maybe what they're reaching for, is they'd like to take it to the next step and see what kind of guidance we're, assuming we have to raise the rates, big assumption, what kind of way would we want to raise the rates? For example, I can tell you my opinion, I would, I would like to have, pick a number 4% a year, and minimize that upfront as much as possible, and just plan on doing 4% for the next 30 years, or whatever, that's how I would like to handle rates. I don't like fixed fees. I have a question on, and I probably got this question from you, Jim, how many meters does the base have in this study? I guess it doesn't matter if I don't like the fixed rate, but, so.
One meter.
One meter, okay, so that, another reason I don't like the fixed rate. I would give, if it was, if I was king, I would give them that direction to go off and at least be doing what they're trying to do, and then ask for Brad to come back with more details on the capital improvement, and maybe that's in the, the point where we do it, and a study that shows there's not a much more cost-effective way to handle the chiller, the, the temperature problem, and address any other open issues. That would be my recommendation as a way to kind of.
I don't think we have to settle on anything right now financially, with the TSO. Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, so I, I've heard a lot of this stuff, and again, I, let's get more information and, and try to get, make the wisest decision that we can. And no offense to our audience, but I, I, I keep hearing this term, and I, I'm gonna just put it out there. If there's some truth to it, and you want to educate me on it, let's go. Let's get together sometime, and you, you show me how the city's really messing up. The term is enterprise reimbursement. I hear it from this side, I hear it all the time, I hear it from out there. All right, I keep hearing this term, and it's put out there like the city is pulling the wool over someone's eyes, and we're breaking the law, and we're probably stuffing money under mattresses, it sounds that way. And then somehow I find out every year we pass, with flying colors, we get audited, and we get awards, so I keep having this, I don't understand where this is coming from. So I know this is a slightly separate issue, but all of my enterprise reimbursement folks that like to scapegoat the city as if they're doing something wrong, illegal, and just around the corner from letting the Attorney General know what Lumpoke has done wrong, please clarify with me. Every single time we have an issue, it's an enterprise reimbursement issue, please, so let's clear that up sometime. I'd love to learn more about that. If this is a really, if this is really an issue that's been affecting our city, and I hear it four or five times a year, someone's blaming enterprise reimbursement for moving money around, let's, let's tackle that one. Let's get to the truth on that one.
I just think that's a separate topic.
Separate or not, but it's brought up every time we talk about utilities, it's brought up every time we talk about moving money around.
So how long would it take for somebody to bring back information on the capital project? I mean, unless you guys want to separate this in two items.
So, if you may, the, if we are only doing what the TSO required, which is, say, the project is the 1.3 plus 360 a year for operations, the 16, 14, 10% would not be necessary, except for us not meeting our debt service covenants. So, the thing that's driving this is the debt service covenant, it's not the obligation to fulfill the TSO.
So I guess what happened is, I guess what happened is, everything got muddied up by putting meters, TSO, and the TSO had several components, one that we appeared to be meeting and one we're not meeting. and one we're not meeting, temperature we're not meeting, the other we're okay with. So I mean, and, and debt requirements, so I think that's why it became very overwhelming, is you had four things on the table here with a primary of, of raising a rate. And I think that's why we're trying, we're fishing in a lot of different buckets right now, trying to wrap this up on what we have to do. I think we have time for the financial reasons. I think we got time to adjust on that through several months. I think we also should probably have some sort of needs analysis document on the temperature, on what you're doing, whether it's a chilling, whether it's shading, there could be other variables involved, on time of day. I'm sure you have historical data on, on the temperature of the water, so we can see what's going on. But I think there's more out there than just saying, hey, I've got a wish list, I want this Christmas present. I think there should be a needs analysis document performed for this. But I, I think we have, we got, you guys got a good start here, you got a lot of stuff. I've still got a lot of questions. I spent, I was here Friday, and I couldn't get to anybody. There were a lot of locked doors that I couldn't get questions from. I came by Monday, and I couldn't get answers again. So I still have a lot of questions. And I think we, we could table this, how long, can we table this for two months, before they come back in two months on something? How long would it take for you to get something on a needs analysis? On that, 90 days on something? What's it take to get something on the, on the chilling of the water? Or do you want to separate that and do that independently?
It's probably going to be a lot more than 90 days, because we'd have to go out to get an RFP to do a fuller analysis of what would need to be done. So that would probably be a year process. I would, just off the top of my head.
So we could separate that, and we could bring back the other thing for the financial recommendation. We're not going to get penalized with the TSO. Seems like we're stabilized on that. City manager? I'm looking at you.
We have until 2027.
The TSO is a process. So that's why it's, is a time, so we have things that we have to meet through 2027. We have to report to the Water Board quarterly on the things that we have not accomplished.
Correct. My concern is about the, the February 1st date of 2025. That's no longer the stickler. Secure project funding for facility improvements.
For the boron sulfate chromium. And we're waiting on the Water Board to go through their public, public process to enact that change to our permit. So we're expecting that in August, I think, of '25. So until they've actually done that, we are, they have not accepted the intake credits.
Well, August of 2025, you're supposed to be completing the preliminary design of facility improvements. So we're not doing that in August?
Which item are you talking about?
Back on the TSO order, page six again. Letter G.
I'm going to have to extend this meeting.
So EF and G are all tied together for the boron sulfate and chromium 6.
So that's, that's a yes, we're not, we're not mandated on this right now.
I wouldn't say that until they set their order and publish the amendment to our permit.
Because what I'm getting at is secure project funding, so we don't need to secure project funding today, because we don't know what the project is anyways.
So you're interpreting what the Water Board has said? So I, I don't know what the Water Board's intention was. They may say you need to have it. I don't, I, I can't answer that question.
We don't know what we're doing anyway, so we don't, we're not, how are we going to secure money if we don't even know how much or what project? So, so my recommendation is, and I'll make a motion as such, that we come back, go out for the needs analysis document for the chilling of the water, come back with us when you can for the project, because then we know there's a project. And the other thing is, come back in approximately 60 days with this on the rate adjustment.
I, I just have, I agree with everything you just said. Let's start with that.
Come back with 60 days is what I'm saying.
But I just want to make sure that, as a community, we're addressing, if there is a whole bunch, there's a technical term, a whole bunch of capital improvements, like pipes that you're saying never got done, and I know you'll say, well, that's all on balance sheet, but sooner or later, we have to pay for it. And that will hit our rates, so I'd like to know that we've at least, at a time, I don't want to get, what do they call it? Paralysis of analysis. I don't want to get there, but I also don't want to leave $2 million or $10 million.
You're going to, you're going to have opportunity with the budget time and the capital improvement plan on those analytics, but that's...
Okay, but I want to make sure it's in his rate.
He said it what he was in this sheet.
No, he didn't say any of this was in there.
This sheet's here. This sheet's in here. All right, so that's, that's my recommendation, that's my motion.
All right.
Just make a quick comment. I appreciate this coming back. I think there's a lot for us to wrap our head around. I respect council for not rushing into this, because we've knee-jerked a lot of stuff in the past. It's, this deserves some analysis, for sure. I think I'm going to hold you to it. Your commitment is, is like, we don't want to risk any fines, and we don't want to default on any debt. I think that's reasonable, that's a good starting point. So if we can come back, let's get that as the minimum, let's make sure we're taking care of that, and then let's, let's have them convince us that there is some specific data points that require us to consider higher rates than that. I think that's totally fair.
Okay.
So I'm with you.
So that's, that's my motion. Oh, there it is, made a motion. Are we good?
Did you break it again, Victor?
No, I don't know, we had it there.
It was there. Hold on.
Most of them, me, and seconded by Vega, let's go ahead and vote. There it is. Wait till the pretty colors come up. All right, I think they gave some direction, passes 5-0.
Mayor, if I could interrupt.
Somebody talking?
Yes. We have an 11 o'clock time limit on our city council meetings, unless four council members vote to extend the time to a later time. Maybe we can get done in five minutes, if not, you might want to vote to extend.
Let's just get down. There's one minute.
I've got six pages of council requests.
Okay, going to written communications.
Nothing.
No written communications. Oral communications, you've got two minutes, end of the meeting here, for oral communications. Seeing nobody rise, we'll close that one out. Bring it back to council comments and meetings reports. I've, I've just got one off what we had earlier tonight, and something that might help, help us if we could get a report like we've had in the past, in helping us out with that. If the city manager, could you bring us something back?
Yeah, we could do that, if you're talking about the public comments.
Yes, in this, in respect to this letter, yes?
I read through that, we can, we can work on this.
Okay. Understanding that it's very difficult to bring something back by the 18th, by the next meeting, because the way the process is, it usually takes two meetings to bring anything back to the people who are still here. So you'll do the best you can. You got, yes?
Yeah.
We're good, bringing something back. Then I'll go ahead, let's go down to Councilmember Vega. Anything to report?
No, sir.
Let's go to Councilmember Wall.
So I was going to request that we, you know, maybe not make an official request, but hope that staff can, hopefully they heard from the community the same way that we did. There's a lot of passion about this issue. No matter where it lands, I hope that we discuss it as soon as possible. There's a lot of people dealing with this. So thank you for suggesting that, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Bridge.
Okay, the ad hoc committee met on the city and theater. They got down to two issues. One was missing comments, and it was resolved, and the other was a reasonable solution to the emergency exit, and everybody agreed that will be found, following all the rules. And I know we're short on time, but I have to say this one. I, I know the city's acting responsibly in certifying and managing food trucks in our city, but I want to go on the record that I'm opposed to a solution that has the city competing with small business. So yes, the Food Truck Friday folks need to get proper permits, but we've loved this event for years, and the city shouldn't use the fact that they don't have to do a TP, TUP, to get a competitive advantage over them. So I just think it's inappropriate, and it's not what our Parks and Recs should be doing. Next item, I haven't seen some recent past meeting minutes, but I do want to get it on record, or repeat it, that the staff agreed that no can and will serve agreement for BODG or development will be executed without city council review, so I'd like to see that in the minutes. And I did reach out to Lumpoke Unified School District on the drones, and they're reviewing it and may get back to us. I did that as quick as I could.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
So I, two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay, so I did, I attended SB CAG, SB CAG subregional, APCD meeting, and LAFCO meeting, and went to come unify meeting with Councilmember Wall. And with that, we will, probably a couple others, but nothing at any city expense. So with that, we'll adjourn until 6:30 March 18th.